Adding members, so that's great, and everybody's here. And so we will get started this evening. Thank you all for joining us. This is the April 20th Lewisville City Council meeting. I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann, and because of COVID-19, this meeting is being held electronically and is being recorded. If you'd like to request permission to speak during different public comment periods, just go ahead and raise your hand by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. Attendees who are calling in on their phone can dial star nine, and we will see a raised hand appear on your behalf. When I acknowledge a member of the public and the city clerk unmute you, please tell us your name, your address, and your question or comments or concern. Each person will have three minutes for their comments. If you wish to speak on a different topic, you'll need to raise your hand again. Thank you for following these directions and helping us maintain meeting decorum. City Clerk mute, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Lay?
Here.
Councilmember Lipton? Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
City Clerk mute, you're muted.
Councilmember Fahey?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Mayor Portem Maloney?
Here.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Here. Thank you, everyone. Could I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
Now moved.
Thank you. Thank you, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone, the motion passes. That takes us to public comment on items that are not on our agenda or items that appear on our consent agenda this evening. If any members of the public would care to comment on an item that's not on our agenda, please raise your hand at this time. Seeing none, that takes us to our consent agenda. Could I please get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you, is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone, the motion passes. That takes us to council informational comments on certain items that are not on the agenda. So I'd just like to start off by talking to folks about today. Today Derek Shelvin was found guilty of murdering George Floyd. This is a monumental decision for justice and peace for the family of George Floyd and justice and peace in our communities. The tragic death of George Floyd in May of 2020 mobilized efforts around racial equity, and it's a significant reason that our city is currently focused on efforts around equity, diversity, and inclusion right here in Lewisville. Today's verdict does not mark the end of a fight. Rather, it's one step in a path toward reconciliation as a country. It's an important boost of justice and a reminder of the additional work that we have ahead of us. Our city is striving to create an anti-racist inclusive environment that's welcoming to all members of the community. In an effort to do this, we've hosted community conversations to discuss racial equity and what it means for Lewisville. And we're in the process of seeding a new community-based equity, diversity, and inclusion task force. The task force will soon begin to work on identifying areas of concern that there are in the communities around equity, diversity, and inclusion, and they'll help us to prioritize areas where the city can have an impact. The work won't be done just by the 11 members of the task force. We'll need participation and engagement of the voices of all Lewisville community members in these discussions. Internally, our city closely examined its own police policies and practices over the last year to maintain peace in our community and equality and justice for all. The city is also currently in the process of creating an internal plan to understand and improve upon our organization's approach to creating a diverse equitable and inclusive environment. Today, we've seen some small steps forward in an effort to address racial equity across the nation, and I will reiterate, there's more work to be done. As a community member, please remain involved. Please remain engaged on this work, and we'll all work together to continue to make progress. Any other council members have comments? Councilmember Fahey?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. I feel a little insignificant after that because that was very important to be said and acknowledged. And I agree with everything that you mentioned. My comment was much more lighthearted, I guess. I wanted to congratulate our library director and her staff on their new program for giving library cards, first library cards to children. And it's been such a successful program. My grandchild just got her first library card. But it was also included in the Denver Post. So it's making news around the country, or at least around the Denver metro area. So thank you very much to Sharon and her staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahey. And libraries are a cornerstone of democracy, so it does tie into my comments as well. Any other council members have comments this evening? All right, seeing none, that takes us to our city manager's report. City Manager Ballser?
I have nothing this evening, other than to say thank you for your comments.
Thank you, City Manager Ballser, and thank you for working so hard to bring this conversation forward in our community. And I'll just note for folks that attached in the packet is the Quarter One Revitalization Commission Report from the city manager to the council. And that takes us to our regular business this evening. Our first item on the agenda is a Boulder County Public Health Update on COVID-19 and the new Dial Metrics Guidance. So we'll have a presentation this evening from Boulder County Health. Megan, I see you've unmuted yourself, so it's possible that our deputy city manager, Megan Davis, is going to introduce the subject.
I was just going to introduce some new folks to the conversation. And as you may know, the Public Health Director Jeff Ziyak retired. And so we want to welcome Dr. Lexi Nolan, who's the interim Public Health Director for Boulder County. Thank you for being here, Lexi. And then we also have Chris Campbell, who's going to talk with us about the vaccines, and also have Dr. Chris Urbina, and also Trina Ruland, who is the county attorney for Boulder County Public Health is here. So thank you for joining us, and I'll just, let me just get the PowerPoint teed up.
Thank you so much for doing that, and thank you all for joining us. We may be outnumbered by PhDs on the screen at the moment. So we have doctors and medical doctors, and this is good. Then we can ask all our tough questions tonight. So thank you so much for coming, and it looks like your slides are now up, and I'll let you all tell us what you'd like to tell us.
Terrific, thanks so much, thanks for having us this evening. We're happy to be here to talk with you about what's going on in response to the COVID-19 response. We'll start with some familiar slides. This is our incidence level, we're at a level of 141 this week per 100,000. It puts us in the yellow category. And just to be clear, this is the previous dial metric that keeps us in the yellow category according to the previous dial. We'll talk a little bit about what the implications are for having been moved into the blue dial a little bit later in the presentation. But we'll run through some of the data based on the previous dial metrics first. Our positivity is at 4.4%, which is level blue, so we're doing a little bit better in that space. And we have 10 days of decreasing in stable hospitalizations, which also puts us in level yellow. So overall, we are in the old version of the dial, we would be in the level yellow. Our case numbers are going up a bit. We are over 100, we've been over 100 per day in the past week. They're currently decreasing, but they've been quite variable in the past week. They've ranged between 28 a day over to over 100. We are seeing a little bit of stabilization around 68 per day. You can see that that line has been kind of between 50 and 80 over the past several months. We are hoping it will continue to go down as more vaccines come in. This pattern is a little bit different from what we're seeing among the metro, the other metro counties. It's trending down a bit. What we're seeing more broadly across the metro area as well as across the state, and certainly in a lot of parts of the nation, is upward trends. If we look at the distribution across cities, we see that most of the cases in the past week were in the city of Boulder, 32% of the cases in Longmont, and the remainder split between Lewisville, Lafayette, Superior, and unincorporated areas. And if we do look at a breakout of the different age ranges, what you'll see is that our older populations are the cases that are low and staying low, and that is a direct result of the high rate of vaccinations among those age groups. The cases that are still high are among the younger populations, which certainly kids under 17 who aren't eligible to be vaccinated yet, but who are back in school. So it's not a big surprise to see some rises in those groups. What we're seeing is transmission, not in school itself, but typically in out-of-school activities, sports, extracurricular, and personal gatherings among that age group. We are still seeing some higher numbers in the 18 to 22-year-old age group as well, most of whom are CU students. We are happy to say that CU is now getting its own allocation of vaccine, and we're looking forward to seeing that number come down. You'll see also that the numbers themselves, if you look at the absolute number, the counts, they're not that high, which is good news. A little bit higher as you get older, and then when you get to the 18 to 22-year-old group, it is a higher number than this. So this is that 18 to 22-year-old group. CU students account for about 63%. It has been rising lately. This is partly to do with opening up, loosening restrictions. This is one of those spaces where we are hoping to really catch that age group before the variants take hold and increase transmission within the groups. So we are very focused on trying to get vaccine to that group. And we are seeing some increases in disparities among the Hispanic Latinx population. This is also not unexpected. When the eligibility for the vaccine expanded to the general population several weeks earlier than we were expecting it to, we knew that we would see some disparities as folks who have more means to access vaccines would rush into those available appointments. And part of what Chris will be talking to you about is some of the various efforts that we have happening right now to really reach that Hispanic Latinx population. And what we expect to see over the next several weeks is that we'll be able to start to close that gap again as white populations that often have more access are able to have increasing numbers of vaccination rates, and we are able to get those Latinx populations into appointments. So we're averaging about 1,600 tests per day. We do want to see these test numbers stay up, even though we're down to 4.4% positivity. We are seeing about 7.1% positivity across the state, and we know that transmission is still high in counties around us. So we need to stay a little bit focused on making sure that we're still getting testing when we feel like we've had exposure or we feel like we might be sick, so that we can go ahead and catch those numbers. As mentioned, our positivity rate is 4.4%. It's a little bit higher than it was in March. We are hoping that that continues to come down with vaccines. And we have about 25 people in Boulder County hospitals right now. Go ahead and go to the next graph, please. You'll see that our line was a little bit flatter. The state hospitalizations are actually increasing. Part of why our line is flatter is because we do have higher vaccination rates than a lot of communities. And what we're seeing is we've had one death, I think on the next slide. We've had one death in April, we had one death in March. What we're not seeing is hospitalizations that are leading to as many deaths. So we do have some hospitalizations, but what we're seeing, both in Boulder County and across the state, is that when people are being hospitalized, when there are deaths, it's among folks who haven't been vaccinated. The folks that have been vaccinated are not in the group that is going to hospital and succumbing to the disease. So it's really a reinforcement that the vaccines do work and that they are very protective. Trina, would you like to talk a little bit about our public health orders and explain level blue and level clear to folks? Because I know we had some questions about that.
Sure. So the state devolved, I'm Trina Ruland, Deputy County Attorney with the Boulder County Attorney's Office. I'm happy to answer any questions. I understand that council had some specific questions, so I think these slides are meant to address those, but feel free to interrupt me if you want me to say something or answer something specifically. So the state on April 15th, devolved is the term they're using, the state dial order that we all have grown to know and love. That's the different color code schemes, and issued a new public health order that is much, much simpler, which just put a cap on indoor gatherings. So along with our metro area jurisdictions, namely Broomfield, Jeffco, Adams, Denver, and Arapahoe, Douglas opted out. The local metro area jurisdictions implemented public health orders that essentially adopted the state's dial order, and all of those jurisdictions moved to a modified level blue. The idea was to be consistent and hopefully pretty straightforward. So in level blue, there's some slightly expanded capacities from what we saw from level yellow. The most important thing to know is that public indoor spaces, all of our businesses, indoor events, anything like that that's indoors requires six feet of distancing. Restaurants can operate with six feet of distancing up to 100% capacity. I imagine the six feet of distancing will come in before you meet that 100% capacity. Last call has moved to 2:00 AM, which is what it was actually pre-pandemic. Offices are moved up to 75% capacity. And what's not on this slide, but I think is important, is that there actually is no capacity limit outdoors. Part of the intent of this order is to move folks outdoors where we know that transmission is, while not zero risk, significantly less risky. If a business or an organizer wants to have an event of more than 500 people, which would only be permitted either outdoors or indoors if everyone is seated the entire time, they must submit their plans to Boulder County Public Health. This level blue is in effect for 30 days. We're not going to move. It's April 15th to May 16th. And I think this is on the next slide already. So from April 15th to May 16th, this is in effect. On May 16th, we're going to move to what's called level clear. Let me talk about five-star first, though. While we're in level blue, the five-star program is still in operations. There's about 60 businesses in Boulder County that are affected by five-star. Essentially, five-star can operate in level clear. There's some additional requirements, face coverings are still required, and restaurants, instead of six feet of distancing, will be required to have three feet of distancing between different households. That last bullet point, number four, is because of the state order. Our local order cannot be less restrictive than the state order. So the state has a requirement that if you have an indoor public gathering of more than 100 people, there has to be six feet of distance. So we can't allow our five-star businesses to operate without that because of the state order. And I know there has been a little bit of confusion about the state order versus our local order. I think the big takeaway is you can just look at our local order, and that should have all the information you need because we are more protective than the state order. The only asterisk I would add to that is that the state put a provision in their order that if you have an outdoor seated and ticketed event with more than 30,000 square feet, you have to submit to CDPH. In theory, if you're going to have an event like that, you would have more than 500 people, so you should be submitting to BCPH, and we can take care of the CDPH. And the other important thing to note is that both of those orders are in effect till May 16th. After May 16th, the landscape will change, hopefully, for a final time, although time will tell on that one. If you can move to the next slide. So on May 16th, that's when our landscape will change again, and those capacity restrictions that we're looking at in level blue, the six feet of distancing, the percent capacity, will go away when we're in level clear. I'm going to talk about the mask order real quick. That is actually separate from the capacity order, the dial order. The mask order, we have both a local one, and there's a state one. In Boulder County, in all areas of Boulder County, masks are required in all indoor public spaces. They're no longer required outdoors. I'm not sure if Lewisville, I don't believe you do, have a more protective order in place for outdoors. But in Boulder County in general, masks required in indoor public space. That will be reevaluated again on May 5th to determine if it should be extended, amended, or allowed to expire. And I don't know the answer to that, so just anticipating that question. The state also has a mask order, which will also be reevaluated and may be extended, amended, or allowed to expire also on May 6th. What I do know to be true, what the state has told us, is that mask order will almost certainly stay in place for schools until the end of the school year, for consistency and because under 16 is not yet vaccinated and cannot be vaccinated yet. There also may be some additional protections for summer camps. Like I said, the school guidance will stay in place, and I think Dr. Urbina can talk to the, speak to the medical aspect of this. But the reference here to hospital admissions, snapback. So the purpose of level clear is that we're not going to have any restrictions, but this is going to be a monitoring period. And this monitoring period is over the summer, goes from May 16th to August 16th. And what we're going to be monitoring is transmission, community transmission rates, as well as hospital admission rates. So that's the number of Boulder County residents that are admitted to a hospital, no matter where the hospital is, for COVID-19. And we will snapback, if you will, move back into a more protective level if those hospital admissions start to spike. The state's North Star in this whole entire pandemic has been preserving our healthcare systems and making sure they don't get overloaded. So this tracks that very neatly with just this one metric of hospital admissions. And then, as Lexi put in here, there's also a provision that the public health order might shift if, for example, we see the variants really taking off and spiking cases. I'm happy to answer any questions about those public health orders.
Thank you very much. So is there any more presentation? We'll save our council questions and comments till the end.
Yes, yeah, thank you, Mayor Stolzmann. And yeah, I'll give a brief vaccination update. And City Manager Ballser, council members and community members, thanks for the opportunity to present. My name is Chris Campbell with Boulder County Public Health. Go ahead to the next slide, thanks. I just wanted to share, it's been quite a while, but a few months since I last presented with you all, and I appreciate the opportunity. We have made significant progress with our community, and right now, we've got about 60% of our community members that have at least one dose of vaccine. So really good progress there relative to the rest of the state. That's about, they're at about 41%. Additionally, that full course, which is our goal with community members, we're at about 35% of almost 100,000 community members. Next slide, please. Thanks, Megan. We just wanted to show, and Lexi discussed this a bit. We've made great progress, particularly with older community members, and it really is starting to have an impact as we see with, both with case rates and ultimately the really disparate impacts and big impacts of COVID. So you'll see here some of the progress we've made with community members. We definitely have some gaps, as we know, and I'll discuss a little bit about some of the work we're doing to address those gaps. Last time we met, we discussed certainly having the ability to make sure we're providing the infrastructure to provide vaccines for the community. And our goal was with our traditional providers and all the providers in the county to be able to provide at least 25,000 vaccines a week. And we're exceeding that goal now, and so we're making good progress, and that is leading to where we're at today with vaccinating community members. We wanted to share this with council, with community members. We always want to keep an eye on where we might be, where we're reaching, you know, close to that 70 or 80% of that vaccination rate with community members, at least one dose. And right now, should we see that consistent vaccine supply? We do see that we're reaching that around mid-May. And again, this impacts a lot of things. That's why some of the orders that are in place with masking and the like are really important. And it's really important to us to remain on that trajectory to keep community members safe. So we're making good progress there. Just wanted to illustrate just the progress we're making relative to the rest of the state. And Boulder and Broomfield actually have consistently been leading the state in doing incredible job in terms of vaccine uptake. So it's a testament to community members making that really good informed decision to get vaccinated. Additionally, a testament to all the providers. So this includes our hospitals, the federally qualified health centers in the community. It's Salud and Clinica. These are all the pharmacies in the community, along with Boulder County Public Health, really stepping up and providing vaccines to community members. It's good progress. One, we also know, this slide's a little dated. I've been working on finding an updated slide, but we know we have progress to make with BIPOC community members, Latinx community members. So I'm going to discuss some strategies that we're implementing currently to ensure equitable access to vaccines. Definitely looking at data, this map just shows some areas where we know we have gaps or where we need to continue to focus our vaccine strategies. So I'll discuss again, it's more just a visual to show some of the areas where we need to continue to work. We'll talk about community-based equity clinics and mobile equity clinics to meet these needs. So again, I mentioned some of the providers that include hospitals and traditional providers. They've done a remarkable job, and we know that community members with IT access and transportation resources have continued to access those clinics. This also includes the larger state clinics that are being run through the governor's office and CDPH. We also really focus then on longer-standing community clinics focused on equity and also some smaller clinics, mobile clinics located at schools throughout the community. So those are our current strategies in terms of providing access. A little busy slide, and I wanted to share this with community members. This lays out the full strategy to ensure equitable access for community members. One important thing is vaccine education and making that good decision to get vaccinated. So we, I'll talk a little bit more about some of those strategies. We've worked really hard with community members to create toolkits. Additionally, we are working really hard for Vaccine Town Halls. I'll talk a little bit about those. So that's been a really important component of our strategy. We're going to continue to ensure that that's available to community members, and they have the information they need to make a good decision to get vaccinated. We additionally have worked with a grassroots group, Vaccine Equity Coordinating Committee. They've really informed this whole strategy, how we communicate and educate community members, how to make our vaccine clinics culturally appropriate and welcoming. So they've done incredible work, and we continue to do that. Additionally, now, we're really ramping up the connection to vaccines. So these are groups throughout the community, community influencers, or cultural brokers are the terms we're using. This includes the Family Resource Centers in the community and a lot of partners that have really stepped up and are helping us get out, one, the information and information on clinics that are available to the community. And I'll talk a little more about those clinics. Just to briefly dig into some of the education component, we, CDPH did a survey just prior to the vaccines receiving emergency use authorization. And you'll see some of the numbers about, you know, how many Coloradans or how many community members be really willing to get vaccinated. They did a follow-up survey back again in February, and you'll see that those numbers went up pretty significantly. So it's interesting to see, it's great to see with Latinx community members making that decision to get vaccinated, although we know that there still is gaps here, even in these numbers. So we're going to work really hard to continue to provide good information and town halls for community members to make that decision to get vaccinated. So we've held about 20 town halls today. This is Dr. Sheila Davis, who's our Health Equity Coordinator. Additionally, we've worked with Lizbeth Mendoza, Additionally, we've worked with Lizbeth Mendoza, who is a cultural broker with us and provided town halls in Spanish. We've worked with other community members to coordinate the strategy. Or Community Health, for example, is held, held town halls, CU has held town halls. We know the school districts additionally have held town halls. So we will continue to provide this, provide this resource for the community. And if, if members are interested, we do have a link on our website to, to ask about having a town hall provided virtually. So just to talk about the, the little longer standing community clinics, equity clinics. We've had some great partnerships and these are now up and running and available to community members. The Lashley Street Station in Longmont, that's a partnership with Salud, Family Health, City of Longmont, Boulder County Public Health. That clinic is, is available two times a week and is really focused on equity. So community members that are really struggling with access. You know, we are both reaching them through cultural brokers and community ambassadors. They can also call our call center and work to get appointments at these clinics. Very similar, very similar clinics, the Southeast Community Hub. We are working with SCL Health, Clinic of Family Health in Boulder County. That clinic's running two to three times a week now. And again, very equity focused. And our, we have been holding regular clinics, large clinics at the Boulder County Fairgrounds. Those are now strictly focused on equity. So we're really working again with, with all the, the groups I talked about to ensure these are welcoming environments, welcoming and celebratory and ensuring folks can access appointments here at these clinics. Again, just some, some additional information. So we, we did work to vaccinate in independent living sites. These are, I know some of the Boulder County Housing Authority sites in, in Louisville were part of this partnership. And so we had about 40 clinics across the county and over 950 vaccines administered for community members. Additionally, we're working with Hope Like Clinic, their agency on aging, Meals on Wheels to identify and work with homebound community, community members. This is across the county. Again, if, if there are community members listening and are really struggling with access or unable to leave their home, they're, they're able to call our call center and we'll have that information here, just the end of the presentation to, to get access to vaccine. We also are working with unhoused community members at the Boulder Shelter, recently vaccinated. We have more clinics planned across the county at the shelters in, in the county. This was impacted a little bit by the Yanson, Johnson and Johnson pause, but we're, we're working through that and are continuing to vaccinate community members. And we are continuing to, you know, explore partnerships with the Boulder Valley School District with potential clinics at school sites. We had, we actually had one with St. Brandon Valley, the Timberline School, which was remarkably successful. So, you know, we, we keep looking and exploring additional mobile clinics and known gap areas. So these could be weekend or after hours. We have the ability to launch these pretty quickly. Additionally, we know that both the State Health Department and the Governor's Office continues, they have an equity approach and are holding mobile clinics. You might have heard of some of those already happening in the community. We, we definitely support those and it's really initiative led by the Governor's Office. So those are additional clinics are being held in the community. And just real briefly, I'm almost done here. It's a, it's a long update, I know. I just want to show we, this is from our Timberline Clinic and it, it shows what an equity clinic really looks like. So again, this, you know, it's, it's not, it's kind of not your traditional setting. It's really welcoming. This was a partnership with Outholder and El Comité and a lot of community partners to, to really ensure equitable access here. This was at Timberline School and, you know, we're, we really like this. This was informed again by cultural brokers and community ambassadors and, and we feel like this is a good approach and is making a lot of progress in our community. And I just want to share this. So our call center numbers here, so for community members, you know, that really have internet access challenges or really challenges navigating all the systems out there, please call our call center. We, we have a partnership also with 211, provide a lot of language, serves a lot of support in different languages. And there's a lot of good information on our websites now. We have a, we have a new informational site on, on the vaccines. We, we didn't certainly ask community to go check out and also define locations again. We also have the website up there at bouldercounty.org. Thanks so much. And I would love to answer any questions for, for the council or community members.
Thank you very much to all the presenters. I'm sure we will have council questions and comments, but first on our agenda, we'll take public comment on this agenda item. So if any members of the public would care to comment, this is your opportunity to do so on this agenda item. So you can raise your hand by clicking the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen or for the folks who've dialed in by phone, you'll dial star nine on the phone and a raised handle will appear on your behalf. Seeing no public comment, that takes us back over to council discussion. Any questions or comments for these folks? Not seeing any people jumping out of their seat. I guess I'll start off with a question I've heard from community members is, you know, so we're in this new level blue and headed in the right direction toward clear. And there's a lot to be hopeful for with all the vaccination data and everything. Are, are you all planning to implement any additional orders? Any additional restrictions? And what kinds of things are you monitoring or evaluating over this period of time? To determine if you need to rethink that or, or come back to us with something different.
Thank you, Mayor Stolzmann. We are, we're not looking at additional orders at this time. We will be watching closely a combination of case rates, variants reporting. We know that some variances of the vaccine, of the virus have greater transmissibility than others. Some have greater severity impact than others. So we will be tracking those metrics as we go. Obviously, we'll be tracking hospitalizations too. The goal is to stay in blue for one month to see what we can get accomplished in terms of vaccines and how that interplays with the kinds of cases that we're seeing in the community. If there were an emergency situation, we would step into action. But the plan right now is to hold steady in blue for a month and then move to clear. And I will also just say that the mask order will stay in place. And we will be considering whether to extend the mask order on May 5th based on what we're seeing in terms of cases and transmissibility.
Thank you very much. And then my second question is about younger people getting vaccines. So do you have an estimated timeframe for, you know, like the 15, 14, 13-year-old populations that want to know when they will be able to be vaccinated?
What we're hearing right now, and Dr. Urbina might want to add on to this one, but what we're hearing right now is that the emergency use authorization will be determined probably in about three or four weeks. And there may be a little lag as we, you know, get new kinds of doses out the door, which may be more appropriate for younger populations. But we are hoping that, that 13 to 15, I mean, 12 to 15-year-old population will be approved relatively quickly and we can get going on that population. And there is hope too, that we will get down to younger populations over the summer. Dr. Urbina, do you want to add anything?
Yes, thanks, Lexi. And thank you, Mayor, for the question. This is a very, very good question. It's lots of people's minds. Cause I think many of you have young children and we want to see if our kids can get vaccinated. So, and it's very traditional for folks, young people to get vaccinated and maybe not the adults. It's actually in reverse now. So I think Lexi's exactly right on the, the, over this, over the next month or two, we will see a vaccine for 12 to 15-year-olds. They've already started trials and much younger people, you know, it takes a while, obviously, that we've proven that both Pfizer, Moderna, Moderna are safe. So it's easier to start those trials in those populations. So I think we're going to see probably in the fall a much younger population being vaccinated. And I heard the national expert talk about this recently. Maybe by the, the first quarter of next year, we'll have vaccines available for all young people. We don't know how young those people will be, but those trials are now ongoing. So great question. Well, we're hopeful that those will come sooner than later.
Thank you very much. Our next question is from Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to Dr. Urbina, to Director Nolan. I appreciate the presentations tonight. I wanted to ask a, a question about, is it, is it determined? Is it definitely going to happen that we're moving to Level Clear? Or is that a determination that you and the county public health board need to make? Based on sort of the evidence and our progress in vaccinations and other, and other metrics?
It will depend on the evidence. It will depend on what we're seeing over this month in blue.
Okay, thank you very much. And, and is it, is it a safe? Is it essentially safe to say that Level Clear has replaced Level Green on the previous dial? Or is it a different level entirely?
So Level Clear, and Tina, correct me if I get anything wrong, but Level Clear is, it's basically without restrictions. But we named it because we wanted to have a mechanism for an observational period. When we could watch what was happening under unrestricted conditions to make sure that we are not, you know, losing control of the virus. Trina, did you want to add anything to that?
That's correct. It, it's not a replacement of Level Green. We took Level Green out of our local dial because it just wasn't functionally very different from Level Blue. But Level Clear is meant to reflect a, a clear status where, where there are no or extremely minimal provisions.
Okay. And, and my, my question for you all then is if the county does transition, is able to transition to Level Clear and there are no restrictions or very, very minimal restrictions. You know, how frequently will you be assessing metrics? Will it be based solely on hospitalizations? Will it be based on case rates? Will it be based on positivity? What kinds of other mechanisms for testing will continue? How will, how, how will that monitoring work? And how will the measures like mask wearing or testing that have sort of been with us now for over a year? Either continue or not under, under a level where there is no sort of mandatory restrictions?
So that's, that's a great question. And that's when, you know, the public health ongoing infrastructure kicks in. Our epidemiology team will stay in place. We will continue collecting data on all of the metrics that we're collecting them on now on a, you know, multi-weekly day, that multiple times a week basis. Our testing, I believe, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, our testing is going to stay in place until at least the end of June and it will be reassessed at that point. But we will continue to monitor all the same metrics on an ongoing basis.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll let Councilmember Dickinson go, but I, I think that's really important that testing, you know, you don't have data if testing doesn't continue at a very high rate, right? And if it's just people getting checked into hospitals who are being tested, if you're not doing true community testing, then you don't really know what's going on with the virus. So it's, it's, I will encourage you to continue with that course and to continue to monitor the virus. And that includes a significant amount of testing going forward, even when there are no restrictions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. And that reminds me of our great wastewater data collection throughout this exercise. Perhaps we can utilize our wastewater data at that point when people are no longer testing. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and this has been a really great presentation. I really appreciate all of you taking the time. It's like dream team of, of people giving us your report right now. It's awesome. My, my big question is just about, now, now that COVID's been with us for so long, do we have any data right now that's informing us on, you know, people that were vaccinated back in November, December, or even in the trials were happening earlier? Are we seeing people, the vaccine wearing out, if you will? And I know that there's a thought of boosters in the future when obviously after everyone's vaccinated once, but, and then people that obviously got COVID a year ago or more. There's that big fear of like, oh, oh my goodness, what if I could get it twice, you know? And so I'm not hearing news of that. So I'm making this internal assumption that we're not seeing that at all yet. Is that accurate? That we're not, we're not seeing the vaccine wear out and we're not seeing people getting COVID twice on a statistically significant level?
Dr. Urbina?
Yes, happy, happy to answer that question, Councilmember Dickinson. It's a great question. It's a fear of all of ours, as you know. Right now, this is the current science associated with reinfections. There have been about 6,000 reinfections across the country and will, in people that have been vaccinated out of hundreds of millions of doses. So that's a good thing. That's a very, very small number. But we're tracking that very carefully because that's important to know how long the vaccine lasts. We know that natural immunity lasts anywhere between about 30 days, depending on your severity of infection. So it is possible that you can get reinfected if you've had a previous natural infection, so to speak. That's why we're encouraging people that have had natural infections to get vaccinated. Cause then it boosts your immune system to actually add another, another extended period. Not like an extended warranty, by the way, but an extended period of immunity, both boosting your natural immunity. Right now, there have been a couple of studies that have answered your second question is, how long does the vaccine last? And, and they did an early study in, in healthcare workers, tens of thousands of healthcare workers got the first dose of vaccines. Remember, that was the phase one that we talked about, that Campbell has talked about in the, in the past. And over 80% of those people, remember, we just talked about moderate severe disease, hospitalization and death. And that was a good thing, 100%, very good. Then we, we tested all those folks and over it protected greater than 80% of those folks from reinfection, from getting infected. So, so that's a good thing, preventing symptomatic and asymptomatic infection. So we are following those folks along and we're seeing still, we are seeing reinfections, but it's still very small. But I can assure you, Councilmember, that we're following this very closely. Not only of people that have been reinfected from natural infection, but also vaccines. And finally, the other, the, the wildcard in this, and our director, Lexi Nolan, mentioned this earlier, is the status of the variants. And because the virus is mutating and that's normal, we know that that's true. We're not sure about the impact of that, those variants and reinfection or protection from the vaccine. So we're also watching that very closely. So in the meantime, you didn't ask this, but I'll offer it. We still need to mask, physical distancing, avoiding large gatherings. So that's a lie. A lot of the restrictions are still in place. And we're going to be watching them very closely because we still encourage people to wear masks indoors. And when, when they can't keep physical distance, we encourage people to wear them outdoors as well. So there are lots of protections we can do to prevent the virus from spreading. I hope I answered your question, Councilmember. I tried.
No, that, that's, that's fantastic. And actually, my second question is, is what you, was what you went into, which is this concern that as we're, just to jump forward, as we're all vaccinated and, and we're feeling really comfortable, that we can actually still get infected and we can actually still pass that infection. We're just not suffering great consequences from that. Yet that repeated, repeated infection cycle creates more of those mutations. And then it mutates in a way that explodes again. And so, you know, I think there's some people that trying to understand how rational that fear is. And, and, you know, as policymakers, you know, I think I'm really excited to be in clear. I'm really excited to tell my community, hey, enjoy yourselves, you're vaccinated. Let's, let's, let's enjoy community again. But there are people that are very concerned that if we are too loose too soon or, or what have you, that even though we're not dying the same way we were dying months ago, that the, the virus could really take on a life of, a new life with variants if we're passing it. So you kind of alluded to, we're gonna, we want to continue somewhat, but as policymakers, what's the, what's the policy direction that we should be headed towards in those, in that fear? I mean, is it, is it, is it a tiny fear? Is it a rational fear? Or is that a serious concern right now for the public health officials? That, that we're going to see another? That that we're going to see another huge outbreak from a variant?
If I could tackle that one, Lexi, do you mind? Okay, I I think you're right on. We don't know the magnitude of that fear. I I can't tell you whether it's horrible or don't worry. I think it's probably something in between. So I think that's why we're trying to keep the mask orders in place. We're encouraging people to vaccine. We still are going to have 20% of our population, that's people under the age of 16, that aren't going to be vaccinated. And the variants are changing. So there's lots of moving parts here that we have to monitor very closely. As Councilmember Brown talked about earlier, we have to monitor those cases. We have to monitor all the other variables that we've been watching for a while in terms of testing positivity and all of those variables, because we don't know yet the answer to your question. So we're we're going to do a slow as opposed to a off and on, which I don't think is a reasonable choice in terms of policymaker. And finally, regarding boosters, now the the vaccine companies are promoting or doing research on boosters because we anticipate that the variants will change enough that we'll probably need another booster after you've been fully vaccinated. So first, vaccinate, wear your mask, continue to think about this, and we'll work with you to try to monitor that situation very closely, Councilmember.
The only thing that I would add is that, and this is just reinforcing what Dr. Urbina mentioned. But what we're seeing globally is is pretty tragic right now in a lot of countries. And, you know, eventually it will circle back around in terms of you know, viruses don't don't know borders. And we do need to be, part of the reason we want to step down slowly is because we want to keep an eye on how that's affecting not just other countries, but what we're seeing in the US and other states a little closer to home, which we expect to have a little bit better handle on pretty soon. The other piece that I would mention is that sometimes when kids get the virus, they do get very sick. And there have been some studies that show that there are long-lasting neurological impacts on kids. So even as we are opening up, enjoying you know, life a little bit more normal, I would really encourage you to keep protecting your kids and keep them out of out of harm's way from the virus because it's we don't yet know why some kids get so sick.
Thank you very much, Director Nolan, and that's a good segue into the last question I sort of have for you. And so in Louisville, we actually have a more restrictive order on indoor masking for children. We had we followed some CDC guidance and American Pediatrics guidance. And so we have people two and up are masked when indoors, which is a little different than the county order. And I know the city of Denver has placed some additional restrictions on capacity indoor. And there's some little differences around the region. Are you anticipating or hoping that cities put additional restrictions in place? Or does this Level Blue protect the communities to a level that's sufficient? And if we get into a situation where additional restrictions are needed, the county is in a position to act quickly?
I'll take I'll make a quick response, but I'd ask Trina to step in on this one also. You know, we do still have masking requirements in the schools that we are expecting to be enforced, and we have a lot of guidance to not just K through 12, but to early childhood education, to sports. It'll be coming out, you know, something will be coming out for summer camps. But we weren't expecting to issue additional masking orders for younger children. Trina, do you have anything you want to add?
Masks are strongly recommended for ages two plus, and they're required in all of our schools. They weren't included. H2 plus was not included our original or in our original order at the time because we wanted to align with other metro counties at the time and with the state at the time. I would defer to Dr. Urbina on the medical aspect of that. But, you know, it is strongly encouraged within Boulder County, and many of our businesses and our school districts do require masks for for that age group.
Sure, and and in Louisville, everyone's required to in that age group. But I just my question was really more our is county health expecting communities put additional restrictions on to protect ourselves? Or do you feel like that we're under enough protection with the level and restriction that that you all have put in place? I mean, we keep hearing cities can go above and beyond people, and you hear of these cases of, well, one city's done this, one city's done that. So my question to you is, are you hoping that we do that? Like, is there some political reason you feel unable to do that? And you're actually hoping the cities are putting these additional restrictions in place? Or can we rely on on the levels that you all have set to protect the community?
I'm going to split the difference with you a little bit and say that, you know, part of the way that we design the orders is really to create a regional-wide approach to some of these issues. But we also recognize that there are differences when you're down at the municipal level between cities across the region. Denver is different from Lafayette, from Louisville, from Longmont, from city of Boulder. And it's completely reasonable for municipalities to develop their own policies based on what they feel their needs are. And we encourage you to do that.
Thank you very much. And so with that, I have been talking with the city manager and just want to clarify from council members. If there's any desire to add to an advanced agenda, a discussion of any additional restrictions or if folks are okay leaving it where it is for now. And if the need arises, we would add an advanced agenda item at that time to have additional requirements. Just I just want to make sure people have time to put it on the agenda if they want to have that discussion because right now we don't have anything agenda around that. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I I think that I would like to entertain a discussion about, not so much about the restrictions per se, but about the city's role in sort of messaging about best practices regarding these types of things, you know. If if our orders, you know, I think it's important that we have our more protective orders. But I also think that it's it's important that as as Director Nolan and, you know, county public health staff were indicating that there are some times when we might want to be recommending certain things, even if we don't require them. So I would I would entertain an agenda item related to that.
And Councilmember Brown, would you feel comfortable if I proposed that you would work with communications staff in the city manager's office to to work on that communications plan? I'm not sure that that deviates from any council policy that we have, and you could do some of that work for us. I'm sort of looking at people's faces to see if that threads the needle or if other folks would like to add the agenda for a more full discussion around the communication plan?
Yeah, if 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 it's a if it's agreeable to the rest of council, I'm happy to to take that on with our communications staff and with the city manager.
Does that seem like an all right approach to the rest of the group? I see some head nodding. All right. Well, that sounds like a great plan. And then, of course, if things evolve and we we see changes, we can always add a future agenda item at a later date. So if we get information that gives us some reason to believe that our community is in a unique situation and we need to do something, we can add it at this time. But for now, we'll make it clear we're not having an agenda item about this for the time being. And we'll continue to appreciate public health for everything they're doing. The weekly updates that you all send have been incredibly valuable through the entire pandemic. So we thank you, and I hope you continue them at least for the time being. And while we while the levels were higher, it was very helpful to have the East County data sent separately. So thank you for that. And now that the levels are lower, it seems totally appropriate that that is been rolled into the weekly update. So thank you just for all the effort and all the updates and and trying, you know, to keep everybody healthy and on track in our community. And just a special thanks for making sure that we're we're getting to underserved populations and and doing our best to try to level the playing field. It's really important work. And then, you know, some of the graphs are painful to see that even with the best efforts of our staff, we haven't been able to to quite get there yet, but we'll keep working on it. So thanks for all of that. Any other last comments by members? Well, thank you all so very much.
Thank you very much.
And that takes us to our next agenda item this evening, which is Resolution 28, Series 2021. A resolution approving a business assistance agreement with Louisville Cyclory LLC for an economic development project in the city of Louisville. We'll have a presentation from Megan Pierce, our Economic Vitality Director. Hi, Megan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity tonight. I'm presenting on Louisville Cyclory's Business Assistance Application. This is an existing business in Louisville. I'm sure everyone here is is familiar with it. It's been in business since 1980, currently located at 1032 East South Boulder Road. The current owners of the business are looking for new space because that building that they are currently leasing is going to be part of a potential new redevelopment that wouldn't allow them to maintain their existing space. And they have a very strong preference to stay in downtown Louisville, not even in other areas of Louisville. Just a bit of background on the particular project. In in their current location, they have about 2,500 square feet. The proposed new location at 889 East South Boulder Road would be a little over 3,000 square feet. So this does make them eligible for the Business Assistance Program because their existing business is expanding its physical footprint. They currently have 12 employees. They hope to be able to grow this to around 20 with the expansion. The average job salary is about $40,000. The intent at this time is to to occupy the new location with very few renovations. This used to be a veterinary clinic, so there would be some minor renovation renovations. And they may undertake some over the next year or so. So the Business Assistance Agreement provides them a bit of flexibility that they may not be doing those renovations to get open this fall, but they may be undertaking them over time. The additional store spaces anticipated them to allow them to increase their gross retail sales, and this would produce additional revenue for the city. The Business Assistance Program criteria is included in your packet, and this particular project would retain basic jobs in the city, retain existing sales tax and create new sales tax, expand a current retail outlet, and also represent retail diversity of the community. The proposed assistance package is a 50% rebate of building permit fees and construction use tax on that tenant finish work that they may undertake. That would be capped at $3,000 of rebates over the term of the agreement. And a 50% rebate on new sales tax generated over a five-year period capped at $58,000. And what's a little bit unique about this package compared to some others we've recently discussed is that we do create sort of a base floor of their existing sales tax, and that is subtracted from the rebates they would be eligible for. So it's truly giving them rebates on new sales tax they would generate now just on the sales tax that they generate today. The project would need to be completed by August 30th, 2022. That's that's not their move into the new location. As mentioned, that's to allow them a bit of time to undertake renovations at the space. And typical of our assistance agreements, the business would need to remain in Louisville for five years or they would need to repay a percentage of rebates received. The financial impact is is outlined on this slide. So we would anticipate rebates of building permit fees and construction use tax of $2,820. But anticipated revenues exceed $6,200 should they undertake those renovation projects. And then, based on the estimates of the retail sales provided by the applicant, the business would be paying $228,000 in sales tax over the five-year period. The base increment that I mentioned is just over $23,000 for each of the five years. So the rebates estimated are $56,813. That's all the information I have, but I'm happy to take any questions about the Louisville Cyclory Business Assistance Package.
Thank you very much, Economic Vitality Director Pierce. That takes us to the public comment period on this agenda item. If any members of the public would care to comment, please raise your hand at this time. If you dialed in by phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. Otherwise, you'll see the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Seeing that, that takes us back to council discussion. Questions, comments, potential motions? Councilmembers?
I'll move. Mayor?
Thank you. Councilmember Lipton?
Yes, I'll move that we approve Resolution Number 28, Series 2021, as presented by staff.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Very much looking forward to Louisville Cyclory staying in town. It's a very exciting project, and I can't wait to see more people getting out there on bikes. Thanks for bringing it forward, and good luck to you, Greg. Any more discussion of the motion? Could we please have a roll call vote?
That's Member Dickinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lay.
Yeah.
Mayor Portem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. That takes us to Resolution Number 29, Series 2021. A resolution approving a business assistance agreement with Med Spa Services of Colorado for an economic development project in the city of Louisville. Megan, please take it away.
Thank you. So this is a business assistance package for a potential new business that's considering Louisville as its first location in Colorado. The Med Spa Services of Colorado is the business entity name. The business name has not yet been determined. Just a little bit of history for you on this particular group. Stephanie Shader is the CEO of Med Spa Services of Colorado. They currently have been in business in Florida for 15 years, doing business as Radiance Med Spa, and they're seeking to expand to Colorado. They believe that the Boulder Louisville market is is underdeveloped and underserved in this particular area. And so they've been really focused on Boulder County for potential locations and have recently really zeroed in on Louisville as the preferred location. The project would propose to occupy 3,300 square feet, which is the entire first floor of the 957 Main Street Building that's currently under development. Just wanted to mention for clarification purchases, we read for clarification purposes, we recently discussed business assistance packages related to the core and shell construction of the 957 main building. But that package did not include the tenant improvements and build out that would likely be done by the tenant who occupies the space. So at at this time, that's anticipated to be the Med Spa group. The company would anticipate hiring seven employees when when they get started and hopefully growing that to about 15 employees over the first five years of of operations. Those salaries average about $53,000 and anticipated to grow to about $60,000 a year. One significant benefit of this is the, you know, entire project at the 824 South and 957 Main Street. This redevelopment occupies a previously residential lot. So all of the the new sales tax and consumer use tax generated here truly is new. It's not adding upon or taking away from revenues that were previously being generated. Again, the Business Assistance Program criteria are in your packet, but this project in particular is is meeting the criteria because it draws new customers that aren't expected to be drawn from a large part from existing businesses. It would create new sales and consumer use tax to the city and would represent retail diversity. In terms of the proposed assistance, this would be a 50% rebate of building permit fees and construction use tax for specifically that tenant improvement and build out work of the space. That would be capped at $8,500 and a recommendation for 40% rebate on new consumer use tax over a five-year period. That would be capped at $93,000. The project would need to be completed by February of next year, and the business would need to remain in Louisville for a period of seven years or a percentage of those rebates received back. In terms of the financial impact, the rebates anticipated on the building permit fees and construction use tax would total just under $8,000. But the city would receive over $17,000 in revenue related to that project. And what I provided you is, you know, based on estimates, we're just recommending the rebates on the use tax. The business is anticipated to generate over $227,000 of use tax revenue over the five-year period. We would rebate just over $90,000 of that. What we didn't include in that direct calculation because we're not recommending a rebate, but this business will also be generating retail sales tax. Based on their projections, they'd also be generating over $83,000 of retail sales tax at the location over that same five-year period. So total impact over five years, $98,882. That's all the information I have on this business assistance package, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. That takes us to the public comment period on this agenda item. If any members of the public would care to comment, please raise your hand at this time. All right, not seeing any on this agenda item. Any council questions or comments or motions? All right, not seeing any on this agenda item. Any council questions or comments or motions? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Director Pierce. I really appreciate this this particular proposal. Are there other locations in the area that this business is considering? Or is this, are we kind of at?
I think they they looked predominantly in Boulder and in Louisville, and this is the lo this is the only location they've pursued to a degree of talking about incentives and really working on negotiating a lease. So they haven't yet signed a lease on the space, but this is definitely the space they've invested the most effort into trying to secure.
So it sounds pretty likely that, you know, if we put this package together, that we will attract them. That's very helpful. I I think one of the things I struggle with sometimes is just, we do a lot of these business assistance packages. I'm very supportive of them, but then I don't always know what happens to them sometimes. I don't, sometimes the businesses come, sometimes they choose somewhere else. And so that's a conversation for another time. Perhaps we could put something on a study session agenda or something to talk about that. But anyway, yeah, I appreciate appreciate that and I have no, no issues. I'll go ahead and move resolution twenty-nine series twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, I was I was gonna make the motion, which I had my hand up, but I think I think Councilmember Brown, you make a good point and I and I I think we're all trying to be, you know, aware of. You know, we don't want to give these incentives if they're not needed, if people are just, you know, coming no matter what. But it's really hard to know that, obviously, and incentive programs are are available in lots of cities. And so it's definitely part of the the competitive package to get people some. I am, I am, I agree with you, Councilman Brown. I think this is a good thing to be doing and I appreciate the work that Director Pierce is doing to actually kind of study those questions and see, you know, how often these plans come to fruition and how much rebate we actually give and how much new taxes come from all of it. So I know she's doing a lot of work and we're going to get lots of great reports over the next several years on on the efficacy of it. But but yeah, I I, of course, second your motion.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further discussion, could we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Maloney?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Our next agenda item is the eight oh nine Main Street Planned Unit Development Special Review Use Landmark and Historic Preservation Fund Grant. So I'll read through the various resolutions that we're going to have and then I'll open the public hearing and ask for disclosures. So the resolutions that will be taken up all under this agenda item. A resolution number thirty, series twenty twenty-one, a resolution approving a planned unit development to allow renovation of a portion of the existing structure and construction of an addition to the rear of the existing structure and associated site improvements and special review use to allow use group number thirty-five, outdoor eating and drinking establishments for eight oh nine Main Street. The second one will be resolution number thirty-one, series twenty twenty-one, a resolution approving a local landmark designation for the property located at eight oh nine Main Street. And the third thing we'll be taking up is resolution number thirty-two, series twenty twenty-one, a resolution approving a historic preservation fund grant for the landmark property located at eight oh nine Main Street. Open the public hearing and ask if any council members have any disclosures this evening. Thank you, and I'll just ask City Clerk if if the addendum contained any additional material for this agenda item that we would need to enter into the record.
Leave the comments all in the addendum or for the next item, not this one.
I believe so too. I just wanted to double check it with somebody else. So thank you very much. And so we'll open the public hearing and we'll turn it over to Lisa Ritchie, our wonderful planner, to take us through this agenda item this evening. And she'll take us through all those different topics that we laid out at one time. Lisa, take it away.
You got it. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Lisa Ritchie, City Staff. Yeah, thanks for the long introduction on all the resolutions. I won't read them again. But yeah, there are three up for consideration tonight. For a little bit of context, this property is in the core of our downtown here in Louisville. It fronts Main Street on the west side between Spruce and Walnut, outlined in yellow. Just one historic image just showing that this building has been here as part of the core of downtown since the nineteen hundreds. The applicant has more detail regarding the historic kind of evolution of this property. And a more recent image here showing today, again, fronting Main Street. Existing structure initially constructed around nineteen hundred, there has been numerous additions over the years and the structure now totals roughly two thousand one hundred forty-five square feet. This is the first PUD or SRU application for this property. There are no others on on record. And it has been vacant since the Waterloo relocated two buildings to the north in two thousand seventeen. I think over time, there's been a few maybe little retail pop-ups in there, but essentially vacant and in pretty bad disrepair. Moving into the site plan for the PUD, the proposal main proposes to maintain the front twenty-five feet of the existing structure, which is believed to be the original footprint of kind of the original portion that remains there today. And so that's the historically significant portion of the structure that would be maintained. And through the previously approved alteration certificate that was approved by Historic Preservation Commission, as well as through approval of this PUD, should it be approved, this portion includes restoration and preservation work. The remainder of the property would be a redevelopment, and so there would be a new structure to the rear going basically to the alley through a covered cantilever there. From the front, you can see here, again, already proved the alteration certificate at HPC, but it proposes to do restoration work on the front street-facing facade. Restore the siding or excuse me, remove existing siding and restore what's underneath. Where there'd be replica windows, new front door. Actually, there's an existing step that goes up to up a step, and so this new front door would be brought down to grade, making the front portion of this ADA accessible. And then a new addition off the rear, so the front twenty-five feet again maintained, and then a new second-story addition that you can see in this straight elevation, it appears fairly prominent. But when you look at it in plan view, you can see these sightlines here are made to represent kind of what the view would be like from the opposite sidewalk. So say, standing in front of Zooka or this, the mercantile building. You can see again the existing facade here, front twenty-five feet maintained. The next portion of the structure is a rooftop deck. So really, this is just kind of a trellis and it would be exposed to hang kind of shade sails, lighting, what have you. And then really, the second-story portion really is at this point here. And so from a visibility perspective, standing across the street on Main, it really does meet all of the intents for keeping that second floor extremely minimal and subordinate to the preserved front portion, which meets guidelines for, you know, both the requirements in the Downtown Design Handbook as well as Historic Preservation Best Practices. So really, I think the design from this perspective certainly meets those goals. As you kind of traverse further to the rear, again, at this point, it's a it's a cell, a two-story structure, all the way up to about the twenty-foot rear setback. A waiver is required for this canopy cover in the rear, but it's it's massing is low and it provides weather protection for covered surface parking and the service areas at the back. So yeah, the top elevation is what it would be. This is the north side. As we move to the south side, you can see this dotted line is the outline for the state mercantile building. And so really, a majority of this building is going to be covered by the state mercantile building on from the south, but this portion here will be exposed and there's a small balcony that's recessed in inset inset here on the south side at the rear, and this allows light to enter into the rear of the structure. It was, the staff report was heavily detailed as far as compliance, but generally, staff finds that it meets all of the standards and guidelines for the Downtown Design Handbook. As far as parking goes, one space is provided, but under our code zero are required. For with regards to the special review use, which is a part of this application for outdoor dining up on the rooftop deck, staff finds that the application meets all of the criteria. The hours of operation that are proposed are seven AM to midnight, so again, could capture a breakfast use as well as your typical midnight maximum, which is consistent with quite a few other SRUs in downtown. And the proposal would allow for music, both acoustic and amplified. Switching over a little bit now into the landmark portion of this application. The, again, the staff report was detailed more substantially with regards to compliance, but staff finds that it meets the criteria for landmarking, including architectural significance, cultural significance, as well as physical integrity. Coming up to the next portion of the application tonight, which in conjunction with the request for landmarking, the applicant is also requesting a grant to fund a portion of the preservation and restoration work as well as the seventy-five thousand dollar new construction grant that staff finds they are eligible for due to the design and massing on the new addition that meets all of the criteria for when new construction grants can be considered. So this table here before you outlines the different portions of the grant. So again, it is an extraordinary circumstances grant. It exceeds the maximum in the resolution seventeen series twenty nineteen. So just for comparison, the maximum eligible under that for a typical project is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. This applicant is asking for four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in grant money. But for context and included in the staff report, they are proposing total cost of work of roughly two point three million dollars. This does not include interior tenant finish work that will come in in the later date. And so most of you know that, you know, costs of construction have elevated substantially. And so staff is recommending approval of this extraordinary circumstances due to the existing disrepair and condition of the property as well as recognition of the high-level investment in the property that the property owner is making, as well as all of this work is consistent with the findings in the HSA. A, the Stark Preservation Commission recommended approval of this grant request with a three-to-one vote. The minutes were provided as an attachment. As well as in your staff report, staff provided a table comparing other commercial historic preservation fund grants that the city council has funded. And what we tried to do for this was acknowledge that costs of construction have gone up substantially since those grants were approved twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, and twenty seventeen. And then just to show kind of a level of percentage of investment that this property owner is making relative to the grant amount. And so for all of those reasons, staff is recommending approval of the total grant amount. With that, we're recommending approval of the three resolutions to approve the PUD and SRU, to approve the landmark designation, as well as to approve the Historic Preservation Fund grant amount. The applicant does have a presentation for you. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time as well.
Thank you, Lisa, for that great presentation, and we'll turn it over to the applicant to let us know anything additional that we need to know.
Great, thank you. This is Andy Johnson with DAJ Design at nine twenty-two A Main Street. I'll be representing the project tonight. I am absolutely delighted to be here this evening. This is the culmination of a year and a half-long process since the the concept was was initially pitched and and then having gone through all the different steps, having had really great meetings with both Historic Preservation Commission and the Planning Commission. We do have a lot of things to talk about tonight, but what my goal tonight is I'm going to give you an introduction or I'm going to give you an overview of the history of the project and then go over some of the highlights that that Lisa was was kind enough to allow me to do myself. So I would like to say a big thank you to city staff, the staff report, the the efforts put forward. This has been an amazingly collaborative project. We're very proud of it. We're very happy with really the whole situation. I'm I'm speaking for, of course, myself, but also for Tebow Properties. So let me introduce the team. The owner of of the property is Tebow Properties. Dana Busa is on the call tonight and is available to answer questions when we get towards the end, may have comments of his own to share at the end of my presentation. Of course, the architect is DAJ Design, so myself and Josh Johnston in my office, among my other team members, were instrumental in making this happen. And then the contractor, PG Arnold, PG Arnold Construction was and a very important component to be able to put together budget, budget for us along the way.
Andy, let me just interrupt for one second. Could you please mute Dana for us and mute Kyle for us just to make sure that we're
Sorry, guys. I'm here when you need me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for joining Dana, and I wasn't trying to cut you off. I just, I think we were getting some background chatter there. So thank you so much for coming and I'll turn it back over to Andy.
Great, thank you. Yeah, Dana, you're you're up next. And then a very important component from very early on, years back, and then recently Ascend Group for Structural Engineering, Matt Berry, Matt Berry was our engineer for the project. So moving into the history. This, these two images are the corner of where the current state mercantile building is located. So what we're looking at are buildings that front Main Street, right at the corner of Spruce and Main. Now, obviously, this looks absolutely nothing like what's there today, but it's fascinating to see what was located there prior to the development of the state mercantile building. And it's kind of amazing that that big building actually occupies this corner where these two buildings right here on the corner definitely, you know, kind of diminishes the size of that. Off to, on the left-hand photo, off to the right, you can see the, one of the original structures that was eight oh nine Main. We presume that this was a residence. We presume that it is no longer there. The image to the left shows shows what occurred just a few years later in in the next photo. So you can see that the vernacular storefront of eight oh nine Main, as we know it now, was was there possibly pre nineteen hundred. And that is the origin of the hundred and twenty-one-year-old building. Looking at the Drum Survey map images, I apologize for the resolution. I can only get as good at images as what's available with the county. The top image shows the iter, going from top to bottom, shows the early iterations of this property. You can see that this property is a very long rectangular property, less than twenty-five feet, about a hundred and fifty feet long. And you can see that the top image shows that residence that we saw in that first image. The next image down shows a building that is approximately twenty-five feet long. It, the words say Barber. There is a designation that there was some sort of dwelling or residence, presumably maybe in the back. And then the third image down shows second-hand store. You're going to see that in some of my photos later on, and that is where the building started to be added on to. We have chosen the first twenty-five feet. It's the most recognizable portion of the building as we uncovered it during our historic structure assessment. And all of those indications are both in the foundation and parts and pieces, but primarily actually in the roof and through the attic. You can actually see the different parts as it was added on, and this is the most intact portion of the original structure. Okay, two images. Looking at Main Street, this is looking south towards what we now call Community Park. The image on the left shows, you know, kind of the early mounds of the mining tailings at the end of Main. You can see the eight oh nine structure is there and the state mercantile building is also there. The image to the right shows the mining tailings have obviously grown to, you know, cover what we what we know is that that smoking mound uh, to, uh, you know, cover what we, what we know is that, that smoking mound of tailings in Community Park. But you can see that as Main Street developed, obviously, um, eight oh nine main, uh, is, is well within that, that urban fabric. A couple images that show close-ups of eight oh nine main. On the left, you can see this building has become the secondhand store. We presume that's right around 1900, somewhere in the early 1900s. And the detailing, um, is very consistent with the image that we also see on the right. So, um, you can see that we have the clapboard siding. We have the very fine dentil, uh, trim. We also have, um, the, the divided light windows, the recessed entry, and the, uh, detailed cornice. Some of the detail at the top is not showing, however, um, some of those, uh, remnants are actually still in existence. The building right next to, uh, eight oh nine main to the right is a gorgeous building, fascinating, would be amazing to uncover. And this structure actually remained this way all the way into the 60s. Um, and we, we've actually believed that a lot of what is shown in that building, um, exists in some form or another. And we would love a opportunity to, to look at that from a historic structure assessment as well. Um, we're really lucky to have, uh, great aerial photos of downtown. Um, the image to the left is in the 1930s. There's no specific date, but you can see that the property here is outlined, um, in red, um, with a little bit of a yellow shading. Um, it shows that the building was added on to all the way back to what we presume was the kitchen, um, addition in the back. Um, now you can see the alley was full of a lot of different types of buildings that obviously are not there anymore. And then the 1962 image is a little harder to see because it is enlarged so much. But, um, interestingly enough, it remained intact. Besides the alley being cleaned up, the building really, um, didn't change, uh, form too much, uh, even into the 60s. Uh, another photo from 1962, this was dated, uh, based on the movie that was showing at the rec. So we're making some presumptions there. But you can see the, uh, building to the left, that's eight oh nine main. Now it has a blade sign. Um, it, it does have some storm window coverings over the existing windows, but most of the detailing, uh, is still intact. And you can see that the neighbor to the north also retains a lot of its, uh, historic character. And then the 70s happened. And so what occurred during the late 60s, uh, early 70s, as we presume, um, we don't have exact dates on these photos, but we're going off of the cars. Um, you can see that there was a brick, uh, veneer that was added all the way across both, um, well, all three buildings, the state mercantile building, um, eight oh nine main, and then the neighbor to the north. And as we look at photos that get a little bit more into the mid 70s, you can see that that brick occurred for quite a while until somewhere in the 70s, maybe early 80s, uh, the neighbor to the north, uh, changed its cladding, changed the window storefront and went with kind of a, a wood, a large wood lap siding. The, um, the la, the clapboard siding, some of the, uh, wood detailing, especially at the top, the dentil, uh, uh, trim, the freeze board, the, the corner boards, um, remained. And we believe that they are still there, just covered up. However, the lower portion of the building was significantly modified. The windows replaced, the brick veneer remained, and the door, uh, was brought out closer to the front of Main Street. And you can see, uh, photos, uh, in the right photo, you can see, uh, that within the context of the built, uh, the buildings on either side. So the color images, these are in the 80s. Uh, this is when it became pascuals. Uh, the brick veneer remained, um, and then was re, was removed on the state mercantile building during that historic preservation process. So the image that we are using, um, that has possibly the best representation of the building, and again, sorry for the grain, grainy, uh, nature of this photo, uh, is the 1948 County Assessor Records, along with some of those detailed photos that we were able to obtain in the early 1900s that show close-ups of, of the, um, of some of the, uh, interesting detailing. The image to the right shows, uh, it in its present, uh, form. Uh, we do believe that underneath most of this, uh, false facade storefront that we will find, um, the original clapboard siding. Um, it'll be up to a little bit of discovery to this, to find out, um, in what sort of condition and, and possible disrepair that it is in. Um, but the top portion, um, remains mostly intact enough to be able to reconstruct and refurbish, um, all the elements that we have accessible to us. Once the brick veneer comes down, we will be doing discovery around, you know, what the original sighting was below the windows. We do believe that these are the original window openings, however. Something that will also change in terms of the context, um, when the brick veneer comes down, we will be exposing the gap between both sides of the buildings, um, that was presently there before it was closed off. Okay, so let's take a look at a site plan. The blue area is the eight oh nine main, uh, uh, building. And as I mentioned, the property is extremely narrow, one of the narrowest, uh, in Old Town, at just about 22 and a half feet wide and, um, at 150 feet long. The areas, uh, in the yellow are, um, the neighboring buildings, and they are largely built almost right up to the property line. There is a concrete gutter that allows for drainage to go to a catch basin that then goes to the storm sewer in Main Street. But the, the side, uh, next to the state mercantile building is, um, almost built right up to the building. So there's a little bit of a gutter there that provides drainage currently there. Um, if you remember, um, having, uh, dined at the Waterloo prior to it moving to its new location, um, there is the outdoor patio and then their outbuilding that, uh, that housed their coolers and, and additional storage. This did not leave, uh, room for any additional parking. It was mostly for trash recycling. Um, so looking at a little bit more of a new site plan, um, this is a simplified version. Um, we are looking at, uh, doing historic preservation on, uh, the first portion of the existing building, and we call that our 25-foot preservation line. Um, then we are adding a two-story, uh, addition, uh, beyond that 25 preserve eight, 25-foot preservation line. And then we're doing covered parking that's within, um, our, uh, 20-foot setback. That will include the grease trap, uh, trash and trash recycling enclosure, um, one parking space. Um, and, uh, we will, we will be requesting, or we are requesting a waiver, uh, in order to do that covering. I'll describe that a little bit, uh, later when we go through the elevations. Uh, floor plans look like this. Again, that 25-foot preservation line, um, runs through all three levels. So the top level is the top floor plan. The middle floor plan is the main floor plan. And the, uh, the lower floor plan is what we call the basement floor plan. It is really kind of more of a crawl space. It's really intended for storage mechanical. There are portions of this that are not occupiable because they will be elevated, uh, due to, uh, wanting to make sure we don't undermine our neighbor's foundation, but also, uh, really just trying to create, uh, space that's usable, um, but clearly not, not a, not a hospitable or, or very habitable space. Um, our 20-foot rear setback looks like this. So we chose not to encroach upon that. We did look at that for a second floor to encroach on the 20-foot setback, but we wanted to keep this, um, you know, really well within, uh, zoning and then the downtown design guidelines. Um, something to note, um, our upper level floor plan has a large outdoor balcony that faces Main Street. We did this specifically in order to keep the activity of the building, outdoor activity of the building facing Main Street and not towards the residences to the west. Um, we did choose, as Lisa pointed out, to do a balcony, um, to allow for natural light. We did this both from a building co-perspective, but also to create some variation of that upper leveled experience. So if we were to do windows right on this property line, they would be extraordinarily expensive, difficult to detail, uh, fire-rated glass windows. So we chose to recess in the balcony and provide like a light well, uh, into the second floor. Something to note, we'll look at the elevations. We are making, uh, the front door accessible, whereas right now it has a seven and a half inch step up from Main Street into the existing, uh, uh, main level. Okay, so in your packet, you will have seen, uh, the building elevations that were part of the PUD submittal. Uh, within this, um, we have, um, front elevation. So this is an existing east elevation. I want to show you this so that we have a comparison to what is being proposed. Obviously, uh, in an elevation view, it does look like a much bigger building. It is a much bigger building. However, the presence on Main Street is largely, uh, um, the way we know it as, as we do now, and that second story addition is much more diminished by being pushed back. This is a side-by-side comparison. The left showing the existing elevation from our as-built drawings. The, um, the right elevation shows the proposed historic preservation elevation with the upper level grade back into the background. Um, the rear elevation, uh, is a fairly simple elevation. Um, there, there are really no openings except for a back door for employees and service. You can see the trash, uh, recycling enclosure and then the covered parking, uh, roof, um, shown as that bar right through the middle. Okay, so side elevation. Lisa touched on this a little bit in her presentation. Our building is specifically, uh, designed to respond to, uh, to how it presents on Main Street. So what we did is we did a careful analysis in terms of view, a view corridor from across the street, across Main Street, approximately where, uh, the Zucca's restaurant is located. And then looking due west across, and we, we did a view line, uh, going all the way across. And, and while we wanted to make sure that the addition was respectful of the historic building, it actually worked out really well with the, um, addition of that second-story rooftop deck to allow this building to naturally step back as it goes west. So you can see that we go back 25 feet. We start with our rooftop deck. We have a steel trellis that allows for, uh, shade sails, retractable shade sails and lighting. That sets back, um, from that 25 foot. And then 30 feet back from that trellis now begins our real second-story building. So you can see that that second story is very much pushed back. We're not trying to necessarily hide it. It really just kind of worked out naturally this way. Um, and, and it, and it seems to be, um, very much in respect to the start part of the building and then Main Street. Um, and then, as you can see, we have a very low, very minimal, as minimal as possible covering for the parking in the back. Um, and this is the part that we are requesting a waiver for. Okay, uh, this is a little bit different elevation than what Lisa showed. Uh, this is showing the south elevation with the state mercantile building, uh, being present. And you can see that from Spruce Street, really, the only portion of this building that kind of pokes out beyond this building, um, is a small portion that extends to the west. Okay, so here's the fun part. So perspective views, we did a lot of perspective views of this because we wanted to make sure that, um, that this was going to be, uh, taking the historic building, um, into account and with integrity. So I'm going to walk you, uh, walking south down Main Street, taking a look at, uh, eight oh nine main. You can see that there is a little bit of that second-story, uh, rooftop trellis kind of poking up over the top. Um, and then it largely disappears as you come around, um, more in front of state mercantile building. Getting a little bit closer, you can see that we are proposing to add all of that detail back, recessed door, beautiful, uh, beautiful windows, um, and then all of the siding and trim restored. We are proposing gaps between the buildings. However, we're going to be doing a decorative metal screen that's set back behind the false front so that we can keep people from occupying that space, but also allowing it to be expressed as it would have been at the time that this was built. So an aerial view, looking at the project, this is an important view. You can see the first 25 feet of the building being preserved and then seeing the roof deck, uh, uh, starting from that 25-foot mark and then the second story, uh, going back. We do have a mechanical screen to, uh, hide the equipment that will be, uh, located at the rooftop. Another aerial view, looking over the top of, um, all the buildings on that part of the block. And then a little bit of a close-up view of that rooftop deck showing the retractable, uh, shade sails, some decorative lighting, um, for that patio, really creating a great environment, um, all of it facing Main Street. One of the things that is important to note, as a part of the historic preservation process, we will be going back to, um, a, a sawn shake roof. So this will be a wood shake roof, similar to the roofs that are at, um, on the structures at the historic museum. And then, uh, 3D view, aerial view of the back portion. So I wanted to show you how much of that building projects past the state mercantile building, showing the mass and scale by comparison. Um, there are two significant trees. Of course, those, um, won't, won't always be there, but they are, uh, young enough to be there for quite a long time. And you can see the, the recess, uh, on that south elevation, providing the light well to the second floor. And then one quick view showing the 3D, uh, from the alley of the rear of the building. To further those 3D studies, we did, um, a photo study and then, um, did a, uh, geo-located, uh, match of our model to the photos. Um, so using SketchUp as our application and matching it to our photos, walking down, uh, from Walnut down Main Street, looking at the, the building in its new form. Uh, it is, uh, really actually impossible to see the second floor from these views. You do see it start to pop around the edge of the gap between the buildings. And I think having that gap there actually allows us to see the building instead of hiding it entirely. It keeps that activity that we want from that rooftop deck engaged with Main Street. Um, and then coming around to Spruce Street, this would be sort of that view from City Hall, uh, looking at how that building would project out around state mercantile building. There's a lot of structure back here. There's a fairly substantial wall, um, some different kind of coverings from the eight oh one, uh, building. But, um, there is still, um, a presence of eight oh nine main on Spruce. Um, I'll pause here for just a quick second. There was a discussion earlier this year about, um, utility upgrades, alley upgrades. Um, I'm not going to go into that tonight. Um, we've already talked about it. Some of this discussion is still in process, but you can see that there is a, um, some significant, um, utility poles that we don't typically see in downtown. And these are, uh, all encroaching on the alley and, and, um, and quite large in diameter. Um, uh, I'm joined tonight by, uh, Paul Arnold, Jeremy Debacker, and, uh, Shannon Rogers from PG Arnold. Uh, Jeremy is going to, uh, briefly discuss where we're at with construction budget, how we arrived at it, and some of the construction logistics, uh, and also rising construction costs. So I'm going to turn that over to Jeremy right now. And then, um, at the end of his presentation, I'll, I'll close up and be ready for questions.
All right, thank you so much, Andy. Jeremy, go ahead.
All right, so I've been working with Andy coming up on almost a year now to, uh, really look at this project and see what the costs are going to be. from a perspective of the entire project, as well as breaking down the, the historical preservation portion of the project and really getting a handle on what those costs are going to be. As we all know, historic preservation, it requires a lot of additional care, especially during demo, everything that Andy's talked about, where we're taking the brick off the front of, of the building. We can't just knock that down. That's a very, it's a slow and delicate process. We want to preserve as much as possible of what's underneath. And we want to expose it and see what's there, the significance of that. And if we, if we can't save it, at least we can find something to match it, but we need, we need to salvage that so we can match it. To be able to do this takes additional oversight. We need supervision on site who has done these types of renovations before and who understand the significance of what they're looking at. This isn't just a rip-off-the-band-aid situation. This is a, this is a surgical process. And there's some extra resources that are involved with that from our perspective, as well as from Andy's perspective. We may pull open a wall and find something that he needs to give input on. And it just, it just slows everything down and makes us a very slow and tedious project. And that's specific to the historic part of it. When we look at the individual site, there's some very specific challenges that come into this site. It's very narrow, as, as Andy said, 25 feet and just over 100 feet long. There's not a lot of space to work within. And as we start to expose the buildings or expose the, the portion of the building that's going to be preserved, we're directly next to the adjacent buildings. We have to make sure that we're a good neighbor to these, these buildings. We're going to have to shore the foundations and we're up the shore of the existing building as we replace the foundation underneath and make sure that everything stays solid. As that existing foundation gets replaced, we'll be working on top of our own footprint to make everything structurally sound and then do all of the renovation work and preservation work that's required. I've spent a lot of time with Andy out there on the site. I've been in the existing crawl space. We crawled around and looked in the attic and as your staff has said, there's, this building's in pretty poor shape currently. There's going to be a lot of things to do on this. We spent a lot of time really developing this budget to get to what we do know about it. And there's still going to be some things we don't know. We don't know what is beneath the skin. And just the general construction market conditions have been changing almost on a weekly basis anymore. Normally on a project like this, we, we'd approach it with a recommended contingency to the ownership of 25, 20 to maybe 25% contingency, just for those unknowns because of how far out we are, as well as what the, what we don't know. And because of the time we've spent with Andy though, we really feel that we've been able to, to narrow that down. And we're down in the, the 10 to 15% range for that contingency. We've, we've really taken the time to narrow that budget down, knowing that it's a big ask at this point for, from the Historical Society. So we want to just make sure that we're doing our due diligence and we're providing a, a realistic number, a realistic number as we can at this point for what the project is going to be. So we're ready to tackle this thing once we get into it. So that's where, that's where we're coming from on this. And yeah, we're open to questions. So I guess, Andy, what else did you have in your part of the presentation?
Great. Thank you, Jeremy. I did, I did skip over a slide for the estimate that is in your packet. Where we arrived at the, the grant funding request is that, that essentially that 50% mark of the budget for the historic preservation portion of the project. Obviously, there's a new construction budget which you have in your packet, but I think tonight's focus is primarily around the historic preservation aspect. As Jeremy pointed out, if you looked at this from a cost per square foot basis, it, it does have somewhat staggering numbers, you know, by comparison to what we typically would do for a, a new commercial building. These have been things that we have discussed amongst us as a team. And, you know, there's a general acceptability that, hey, look, if we're really committed to doing this, you know, we, we need to do it right. And, and those, so those cost per square foot are quite high. So just for the historic preservation portion, it's around a little over 1,400 per square foot. The new construction cost is right around 312 per square foot. Now that's higher than normal, but given the site constraints, this, that is within an acceptable range of, you know, predictability. What is high is the site, you know, if we take the actual site area. So our building is primarily the site. And if we were to compare it to the overall site area, you know, we're at around 650, 660 a square foot, which is quite high for a commercial building. I think that we're extremely lucky that Tebow Properties is committed to this, has been, you know, really a great driver for this project and, you know, wants, wants to give back to this Louisville community and, and to Main Street and really recognizes the importance of reinvesting in, in our Main Streets.
Thank you, Andy. I think that's a really great place to just put a pin in it for one moment, just for a process-related question. So normally I would break at eight, so folks could take a quick break, but I'd like to get through the public hearing so we don't have a gap in the middle of the hearing. So we will take a break at the end of the public hearing. And so when, once the applicant's done with the presentation, we'll have time for the first round of public comments and then we'll come back for questions from the council and then have the final public comment before we have our deliberation and vote. And so I just wanted to check in with folks on our, our break time and make sure everybody would be able to make it without taking a stop at this point. Looks like I see head nods and so I'll turn it back over to you, Andy.
Okay, great. And with that, I will close my presentation. I'm available for questions. PG Arnold's available for questions. Dana Busa is also available for questions. Before I close entirely, I'll, I'll allow Dana, if he would like to share a few words, otherwise we're, we're ready to move on.
Thank you, Dana.
I think we're good to move on. I couldn't possibly compliment anything that Andy said. I'll leave it. He is the master of mixology, so.
Thank you very much. That's called not selling past the sale. I appreciate that. Thank you. And so we'll go to our members of the public to comment at this time. If any members of the public would care to comment, please raise your hand. If you've dialed in by phone, go ahead and dial star nine. Our first commenter this evening is John Malansky. John, if, when we unmute, if you'll tell us your name and your address and then tell us what you'd like to tell us.
Hi, everyone. Counsel, Andy. My name is John Malansky. I live at 450 Fillmore Court in Louisville. And first of all, I want to say thank you to Andy and DAJ. They're impeccable in their attention to detail and especially in the interest of doing it right. In my opinion, as a private citizen and not being involved in the discussions at all, I did want to mention in the interest of doing it right, if for any reason the city or the Downtown Business Association or any of the parties involved did want to make improvements to the alley, for example, widening, possibly for fire access or something like that, I'd like to see that considered. As far as I know, that building would be the one that would come furthest back with that carport and that might preclude doing things such as widening the alley or putting a fire department connection in the back. So I just wanted to make mention of that. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public care to comment on this agenda item? And as there's an ordinance involved, there'll be a second round of public. So that takes us over to council questions and comments. Any questions or comments from council members? I'd just like to thank Mr. Tebow and Dana for bringing this forward. This is a really important historic preservation project in our community. This is exactly what our preservation fund is for, is to help offset the extraordinary costs with rehabilitating historic structures. And so Dana, if you'll please pass on the community's thanks to Mr. Tebow on our behalf for bringing this forward. Other council member comments or discussions or deliberations? Council member Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Planner Ritchie. Thanks again, by the way, for all of your work on this and thanks to the applicants for their diligence to this. I mean, it's a complex project and it's an important, incredibly important building. The, the question I have is, I think a lot of the historic preservation that comes before council is related to residential structures. And I know that we've approved residential grants for extraordinary circumstances. Most recently, the, the old church building on Grant, the First Baptist Church, I should say, on Grant. And I, I don't, help me understand sort of what the, what the limits are in the, in the various, in the ordinance and when, if there's different types of projects. I'm just not as familiar with the sort of the limitations on the historic preservation, the landmarking and the, and the various limits that, when extraordinary circumstances kick in in particular cases.
Sure. I think that's a really good question. And so generally speaking, the resolution, the funding resolution that City Council approved is what we refer to as Resolution 17, Series 2019. And so that's been amended from time to time. I think the earliest iteration was in 2012 when kind of the, the preservation tax was passed by ballot measure. I think was the first time we had a funding resolution in place, but I'd have to double-check that anyway. Point being, in 2019, we updated to the most recent funding resolution, which sets kind of the, the grant amounts eligible for both residential and commercial properties. As I mentioned, commercial properties are eligible for up to $275,000 in grant funding if they meet certain criteria. And, you know, if they're demonstrated through kind of the HSA process and they get vetted through staff and then ultimately Historic Preservation Commission and then finally City Council. Within that funding resolution though, there's also a provision for what we call extraordinary circumstances. And so the language is in your staff report, but basically it's, you know, kind of those unforeseen things that come up on a, on a project that are unique to that project that warrant additional consideration for additional expenditures from the grant fund. And so from time to time, you're right, we see those requests. And so in this circumstance, and that's, there's no maximum within that funding resolution. It doesn't have a kind of a high-end maximum for that. So really it's at HPC's and councils discretion if you think the extraordinary circumstances are warranted and met through the justification, as well as kind of the overall project goals. And does it meet kind of the goals of historic preservation and, and do the site considerations and unique circumstances warrant those expenditures? Does that answer your question or additional clarification?
It, it does, Planner Ritchie. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yep. Thank you. Council member Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. A few, I think, two or three questions for staff and one for the, the team. Clarification, this is a match, so they have to spend the money first and then submit those invoices receipts, if you will, to get matched. We will not be writing them a check to do the project. And that's, that's my understanding. Is that accurate?
Yeah, to clarify, that's a really good clarification. So within the funding resolution, they are, is a commercial property eligible for a $50,000 landmark incentive. So that would be just by virtue of landmarking the property. That's an unmatched incentive. So that would be just a straight 100% non-matched grant to them. The next portion that does not require a match is the $75,000 new construction, which essentially, you know, that's the remainder of, I think, the $1.7 million contribution that they're making from the private side to that. But that under the resolution does not require a match. The remaining portion, because it's extraordinary circumstances and because of the provisions in Resolution 17, do require a match. And so, yeah, Andy showed on the slide kind of the complete total. The city would be fronting or paying the 300 and some and they would be matching the rest. But then on the backside, you're right, the applicant property owner has to actually spend the money first. We verify it all through kind of invoices and proofs of payment that it went toward eligible work. So it's not like we're writing a check for $492,000 with, you know, kind of no backend check that it goes to the preservation work.
And then just for clarification for, for all of us, I think it was, it's interesting to have a historic preservation grant for new construction. And so again, just a clarification that that is for the scale being respectful to the historic. You know, so, so instead of bringing the building all over the front, all those things, so it's actually making new construction that fits with the historic piece, you can get that extra 75K that isn't matched, but that isn't. I think sometimes for the public listening in, like, wait, why, why do they get money for new construction? But again, it's, they only get that if they're meeting some criteria around preservation with their new construction. So I just want to add that. And then I think the other, I was a little surprised to see project management as something in their 734,000 that we would be matching. And I don't know if that's just different between residential and commercial, as well as contingency. My, again, memory was that we don't typically match contingencies or management, just the actual work. And so maybe if you can just help me understand why, why those are included and if it's just different with commercial or what's going on.
Sure. So I think that's a great, a great observation and something to highlight. It's not been a hard and fast rule one way or the other. There have been projects where we include press, project management as well as contingency budgets. I think what's something that's different on this project that you're seeing is such a detailed line item bid for your grant information, whereas typically I think it's more of like, you know, a really specific scope of work for say windows or foundation work. But this is not unique in that request, although agreed, it doesn't come in on everyone.
And then I think, I think another thing that's just important, because this is such a big grant potentially, is that we're doing, once we agree to a 50% match, and were we to agree to a 50% match, namely 676, oh yeah, 367,000 for the match portion. If those costs are higher, which they could certainly be, we're only committed to what we agree to today potentially. And if the project ends up costing twice as much for them, we don't match the new amount. We only give what we committed to today. Is that accurate?
That's correct. We agree to the scope and the maximum amount, but we, you're right, anything that's higher than that. Or conversely, if the project comes in less, say, construction costs fall, nobody expects this from happening, they don't spend the money, they don't get reimbursed the full amount either. So I think in both circumstances.
So it's, it's a match up to 367, but it can't go above that. But it could be below if they don't spend. Okay. And I think, I think that's all I have for, for you. Thank you for all those answers. And then for, I don't know if it's Andy or, or someone else, but I'm really concerned that as we get into this project, we'll find that the front 25 feet just isn't savable. And so best intentions, but we're going to have to demolish that and go again. So what's your confidence level and what are the assurances that when we're six months into this project and we're trying our best to preserve it, that we're actually going to successfully preserve that front and not just do a recreation of, of that front facade, front 25 feet? Like how, how do we, I know that happened with Main and South. You know, so how, how do we, and it nearly happened with my house. And by the way, Andy, no shout out, that that was my house in that picture, where the Mercantile Building stands today in the 1800s. That's the old Louisville Hospital, which I live in.
Is that a disclosure? Just kidding.
I know, right? Yeah, you're, you're building next to my home. But, uh, yeah, so what are, what are the assurances that, that we'll actually be able to successfully save that front 25?
I'll, I'll answer that question. So I'm sorry.
I just said, thanks, Andy.
Okay, you're welcome. So the, the beauty of the process that we have to go through with historic preservation and the reason why it takes so long is that there are, there are multiple steps and lots of stopgaps during the process to ensure that we're making good decisions. The historic structure assessment is an entirely different process than it is for residential. It's much more in-depth. The outcome of that process is a detailed engineering report and analysis. We also spend a lot more time in the building, to be perfectly honest. We have the budget to be able to do that. We bring in all the consultants that we can, that are appropriate for We bring in all the consultants that we can, that are appropriate for the process. So during my time with Matt Berry from Ascent Group, we shared that concern specifically, particularly when you go down in the crawl space and you see the condition of it and you look at how it was cobbled together so badly over the years. You know, we have to, we have to spend a lot of time reverse engineering it and deciding if these are good decisions. We feel very confident, very confident about the, the front of the, the false front facade. Definitely feel like that is, uh, completely doable. We know that once, once we sever that building at that twenty-five foot mark or somewhere along that way, we're going to be essentially redoing that crawl space foundation underneath that existing building in phases as, uh, as we move through towards the front. It's not going to be kind of all one and done. That's why, um, you know, when, when Jeremy's talking about the difficulty of the site and the, the careful nature of historic preservation, it's surgical. It's not, it's not, you know, just bring in the excavator and scoop it out. So, um, I, I feel very confident that we've developed, um, a very nice multi-stage plan to attack the historic preservation and do it with integrity.
Thank you, Andy. And then just Lisa or Rob, could you just clarify for the record that the other property that was brought up? Well, it's not really coming up today, that, that wasn't a landmarked property. And so the HSA wasn't done and that the circum, just, could you just clarify the record around why the circumstance was different there?
I'm sorry, can you clarify which property?
Across from, across from the museum.
Twenty-four south property.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. I wasn't sure. Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
So what was, um, can you repeat the question about the house?
Well, so just that, that was kind of brought up, how do we know that won't happen here? And I just wanted some staff clarification that that property wasn't landmarked, like HSA wasn't done. It's a very different circumstance and that there was actually a mistake made that allowed for the demolition of that property. And so that circumstance would not likely happen again.
Yeah, that, that, that's correct. I think that went through a PUD review process. And so there was a request to demolish and to basically to rebuild the building because of the structural condition that was found. And I think that in retrospect, that probably should have gone through some level of Historic Preservation Commission review prior to that happening. But that, again, that reconstruction was approved. And again, that wasn't a historic preservation project or a landmark project. Does that help clarify?
Thank you. Yeah. I just wanted to clarify that, that, that the pre-work that Andy was describing didn't happen on that property. And I was hoping that that can help explain why the circumstance is quite different.
Yeah. And I, I don't know if the story, I don't know if the historic structure assessment was ever done because that project started, um, you know, many, many years ago. So I can't say if that was ever done, but it definitely didn't go through the same level of review as this property has gone through.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Dickinson, did you have any more questions?
Um, I think that's it for now. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Fahey?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I wanted to add my thanks to, to Andy, to Lisa, to everyone involved in this project. I think it's going to be a wonderful building when it's finished and when the front twenty-five feet is preserved. I'm glad that Councilman Dickinson brought up all of the, uh, the financial concerns about how much money we would be giving as matching funds and as grant money. The only request I have beyond that is if you happen to find a tunnel under Main Street, please let us know.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahey. Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, I don't know how to follow that one. I had a, I had a couple of questions. One is, when did, uh, Mr. Tebow's company acquire that property?
Nineteen ninety-six.
And, uh, was the, and these are sort of my own, my own interest in this, but, uh, has there been further deterioration of, of the, of the structure that's substantial since then? Or has it, uh, did you kind of come in, or did they come into that? Basically, seeing the same stuff that they're seeing now?
A lot of what we see, particularly in the crawl space with, um, all the structural members, Flora Joyce, uh, Foundation. It is very clear that that was decades, decades in the making. Restaurants are hard businesses, uh, for any, for any, uh, space, even new structures. And there, there were some tenant finish work that, you know, may, may have, may have, uh, done better with some better maintenance, uh, but those are in isolated locations. I think that, uh, it is very safe to say that there's a, there were a lot of deficiencies that would have been probably pre-nineteen eighty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay. And so, um, just wanted to comment. We had the one hubbit comment from Mr. Malansky and, um, Andy alluded to this in his presentation that in a different action that city council has taken up this year, we've agreed to doing some improvements in the alley with undergrounding the power lines that will remove some of the conflicts and make there, uh, be better access. Um, and so, uh, I would just encourage the fire district to work with public works on, on those improvements, ensuring the pavement condition and the width meets the requirements that we need back there. And so if there are any other public comments at this time, go ahead and members raise your hand and we can take any other public comments on this agenda item. Not seeing any, so that takes us back over for council. Any final council comments? And if, if there are none, I'll close the public hearing and we can take some motions for some resolutions. Mayor Portemalani?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think this is a very, very interesting project. I appreciate the architects' work and all the structural people. I always enjoy, I don't know, not, not everybody likes this, but I enjoy reading the planning commission comments. And, uh, they do vet a lot of issues. I appreciate all the work, but it's been done by staff, by the planning commission, and certainly by the architects and, and all those people. And so I think this is a great project. It's a great preservation. It's a legacy for downtown. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution number thirty, series twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. And before I close the public hearing and take votes on that, I'll ask if there are any other final council comments or discussions or deliberations on this resolution or any of the other resolutions. Councilmember Fahey?
Oh, no, I, I just wanted to second the motion.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Dickinson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just, um, I, I do want to point out that, um, I think this is, this is a fantastic project. You know, one that has been vacant since two thousand seventeen is really painful for our community. And I think having some action here, obviously it'll be vacant for another couple of years, um, as you go through the process of building it. But, um, I think it's a, a huge hole in our main street. I'm really excited about it. And a great historic, uh, project, um, that we have Matt Berry and, you know, Andy Johnson, intimately involved in this project is fantastic. You know, um, Andy lives on Lincoln and, and Matt lives on Scroose. To have local people, um, working on this project is, uh, just fantastic. And, you know, I, I, I just, I think the two point three million dollar budget is, um, adorable. And I think that, um, I'm really, really impressed with the investment that, um, Tebow and, and, and everyone is looking to put into this building. And to partner with you guys at four hundred and ninety-two thousand is huge. That is a huge investment of our historic preservation fund. But I think it is absolutely for preserving buildings like this. Um, and I'm really, um, really excited to vote in favor of this and, and to see this come to fruition, not just be approved, but, but to really get it to the finish line. So thanks, thanks for bringing it and just, just so excited about this project.
Thank you. Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, uh, I wanted to echo, uh, a bit of what a number of people have said. I, I'm really, uh, impressed by the, the care and the specificity. I, you know, I'm not going to say that the budget's adorable. I won't go so far as to say that, but I really do, this, this building is, um, it's a treasure, but it's a treasure. It's got some, uh, some work that needs to, to go into it to make it shine. So I, um, I, I hope for everybody's sake that, uh, you know, you can do the work and you're going to end up, uh, maybe not having a, it's difficult to time that front, uh, part of the building as you expect. But I, I'm real excited about this. I think the fact that there's a lot of local involvement in this is just, it's icing on the cake, uh, to me. But I think it's, um, it's something that this fund, this tax that we collect, is, is doing in our town that is, um, very exciting. And I'm, I'm really proud of the community for continuing to support that tax and for people like you who are willing to use it and use the funds that are created from it in the way you're doing it. So thanks again, and you know, best of luck on it. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'll close the public hearing on this agenda item. And I'll ask for a roll call on Resolution thirty, series twenty twenty-one.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Portemalani?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Could I please get a motion to approve Resolution number thirty-one?
To move.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. There's a second from Councilmember Lay. Any discussion of the motion of approving the local landmark? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion's approved and that takes us to Resolution number thirty-two. Could I please get a motion to approve Resolution thirty-two, which would be the resolution approving the grant?
To move.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. And could I please get a, a roll call vote for that motion?
Mayor Portemalani?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. And so with that, we will take a brief recess. It's eight twenty-two now and we will get back to order at eight twenty-seven. See you all in a moment. All right, it is eight twenty-seven. So we'll hope folks get their screens back on here. There we go. Thank you so much, everyone, for allowing us to take that break. And that brings us to our next agenda item this evening, which is ordinance number 1806 Series 2021, an ordinance approving the vacation of a 53.56-foot-long portion of a five-foot-wide utility easement on lots 22, 23, and 24, except the east three and one-half feet of lot 22, Block 6, Jefferson Place, 701 Pine Street. This is our second reading and public hearing. Well, I will open the public hearing and ask if there are any council member disclosures. Seeing none, I'll enter into the record the additional comments that we received from members of the public by email. They're posted on the city website, so anybody can view them right now. And council was provided a copy by the city clerk this afternoon. Is there anything else I need to enter into the record this evening? No, I think that's it. Thank you very much, City Clerk. And so we'll have a staff presentation on this this evening from one of our fantastic planners, Ellie Hassan.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Ellie Hassan. I just started with the city in January, so this will actually be my first meeting with city council and just with the public hearings in general in Lewisville. So it's nice to meet everyone and nice to be here back in my home state. I was out in the Bay Area for a few years. So with that, I'll get started on this presentation. So the item I'm presenting before you guys is the 701 Pine Street Partial Easement Vacation. And for a little bit of context, this property is located at the corner of Jefferson Avenue and Pine Street, and it's also in the Old Town Overlay District. Just for a little bit of history and background on this, at 701 Pine Street, it was part of the Jefferson Place subdivision, which was created in 1880. And in 2006, city council approved ordinance 1845 Series 2006, which vacated a 10-foot-wide, 125-foot-long alleyway north of the property and distributed the land evenly between 701 Pine Street and Lot 19, which is to the north. And this created two five-foot-wide utility easements. Per the ordinance, the easements were reserved for the operation, maintenance, repair, and replacement of existing and future public utilities. In 2020, the property owners applied for a building permit for a new two-story, single-family residence on the property with a detached garage. The owners would like to place a portion of their detached garage in an area within the existing five-foot easement. The garage location complies with the three-foot setback standards for the Old Town Overlay District, but requires a partial easement vacation to allow the structure to be built in the proposed location. The application requests the vacation of a 53.56-foot-long and five-foot-wide portion of the easement, which is approximately 268 square feet in area. This portion would span through lots 23 and 24 and part of Lot 22. The remaining 20-foot portion of the easement will be used for existing utilities. The portion the applicant proposes to be vacated is not currently being utilized for the operation, maintenance, repair, and replacement of the existing utilities, as is reserved under the or under ordinance 1845 Series 2006. Staff referred the proposed partial easement vacation to utility services and city departments and did receive confirmation from Excel that their facilities are outside of the easement vacation area. The city and Excel do not anticipate the need for the easement for any future public utilities and did not object to the variance request, to the not variance vacation request. Staff did not receive any concerns or comments from other utilities, including Comcast and CenturyLink. Because there were no concerns received from potential users of the easement, staff is supportive of the partial easement vacation. And based on this, staff is recommending that city council approves ordinance number 1806 Series 2021 to vacate a portion of the existing utilities. And that concludes staff presentation, unless there are any comments or questions.
Thank you very much. Is there an applicant presentation this evening?
I believe Andy Johnson, they have one for this project.
Thank you. Andy, did you want to tell us anything in addition to the staff presentation?
Yes, thank you. Okay, Andy Johnson, DAJ Design, 922A Main Street. This is a view of the survey drive from the improvement survey plat showing 701 Pine in the corner with surrounded by Jefferson Pine, Lafarge, Spruce. Just to give you kind of overall context, this is the 10-foot alley that was vacated and then had a recorded easement for utilities. Primarily, most of those utilities come off of the alley, the platted alley, and run about to the property line of 701 and then disperse from there. Actually, they disperse prior to that. If we look at the ISP, you can see that that 10-foot alley runs basically from Jefferson all the way to the platted alley. One of the things we are not talking about tonight is the fence encroachment. After reading some of the public comments from emails, there were some questions about that. And I just wanted to be clear that that is not something that we are discussing tonight. In terms of the exhibit, for this partial easement vacation, the lighter portion is what we are vacating. The darker portion here remains, as well as the 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 other parts of the easement that are not on the 701 property. And again, all of this easement continues to the alley. The reason why the 20-foot is appropriate with the proposed structure and really any proposed structure, there the current the current set sanitary line really only utilizes the first 20 feet from the east property line running west. And the current plan for the structure is to do a directional bore at a nine-to-eight-to-nine-foot depth below grade. So an additional five feet below the existing sewer line, all the way to the alley to tie in and tap into that sewer main. This has been reviewed with Public Works, with the Engineering Department, and has been discussed. This is one of many iterations that have been discussed. This is the least invasive and uses the current infrastructure that is in place. And so by vacating part of this this easement, basically makes it makes it more relevant. There there are no utilities essentially running west of that 20-foot line and actually not much really past, you know, kind of the first 10 feet. So so tonight, this is really a technical document review. It's just a partial removal of the easement containing no utilities. I just want to be clear that what we're not reviewing, since there has been some public comments over this, is that we are not reviewing zoning, which would include setbacks, height, and size. It does not include talking about fence lines, and this does not talk about building design. And I did I did take time to talk to the neighbors who were so kind to reach out, had some great discussions. I did read the emails, and so I'm available for questions if there are any about those or or this vacation. Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like Councilmember Lay has a question.
Yeah, actually, I my question is for City Attorney Kelly. So I can hold it right now if this isn't the right time.
All right, well, we'll go ahead and do public comment first, and then we'll come back to council questions and comments. And then we'll have our final round of public comment on this before we close the public hearing. So we will turn over to members of the public that would like to comment on this application this evening. If you've dialed in by phone and would like to comment, go ahead and dial star nine to raise your hand. And if you've logged on with your computer, at the bottom of your panel, you'll find a raise hand button that you can raise your hand. And when I call in, folks, if you'll tell us your name and address, and then tell us what you'd like to tell us, you'll each have three minutes to tell us anything you'd like to. The first person that would like to comment is Jim Tissom.
Let me unmute.
Now we can hear you.
You can hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi. Hi, Andy. Good to see you. Hey, so I've been neighbor to the east of the new property, of the new building, a new house going up. And I just want to say that the integrity of the of the building and and Andy's Andy's work is is noted. So I really appreciate his communication. One of the things that I did mention in my email is basically, you know, I the the non-obstruction of the north fence, and we've had a good discussion about that. Just the just a couple of concerns I threw in there, being that the house is is pretty tall on my side of the property. Therefore, I did lose my winter sunlight into the into the rooms there. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the integrity of the, you know, the neighbors are are considered and that, you know, it kind of it maintains its understanding of what 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 a good neighborhood should be. So I'm just I'm just kind of throwing that out, being that, you know, I'm the neighbor and just want to be living in a great neighborhood and just kind of looking at it that way. So with that, I just want to just say it's just that it's a great pleasure to be living here, for one thing, but to be a part of this community and to have some roots here that go way back to those pictures that I was seeing earlier is is pretty cool. So I just with that, I'd just like to say big thank you to all of you. And and kind of just getting my two cents in where this is the first time I've done this. So this is pretty nice for me. So with that, I'd like to say thank you.
Thank you very much. The next commenter is from a phone number ending in seven one seven eight. We can hear you.
Hi, this is Valerie Forrester, and I'm the resident at 720 Jefferson Avenue. I would just like to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a little under the weather, so if you could bear with me, I'd appreciate that. I've worked in the city of Lewisville for the past six years, and I played a big role in my decision to also make Lewisville my home. When I signed the lease on 720 Jefferson Avenue, I knew that the home at 701 Pine was being scraped, and the new residence was going up in its place. I've been in the construction industry for 30-plus years, so even with the size of the new house, I felt comfortable entering into a long-term lease agreement because of the easement between the two properties. The original building plans show the garage being built within the original site plan, so there was never a thought in my mind that the easement was in question. I submitted comments on this on April 12th, and I hope you've had the opportunity to review those, as well as the response from Andy Johnson. I'd like to just take a moment to clarify my original concern. I fully understand that the vacation request is not a variance and does not need to meet the seven criteria set forth in a variance application process. I chose the wording for my concerns in that document because these issues are no less relevant in this vacation of easement request than they would be in a variance request. The insinuation that my concerns should be dismissed because the neighbor cannot impose limitations on the project because they are not acceptable to their current living conditions is outrageous. At what point does the homeowner's living conditions become more important than mine? Whether I am the tenant or the property owner, this project has no greater impact on anyone more than me at this current moment, notwithstanding the long-term implications posed to the property owner. My comment about the construction fencing in the piles of dirt was not a complaint about the construction fence encroaching into this easement, as Mr. Johnson suggests. As stated earlier, I've been at this a very long time, and I'm certainly sympathetic to buildings and the challenges it sometimes presents, like a little dirt over the line. It was, however, a concrete example of how having this garage built so close to my kitchen window represents the loss of light coming into my home. I don't know if anyone has made an actual visit to the site or whether you're relying on the footprint on the plan, but it's difficult to visualize just exactly how close this garage will be to my home when you're seeing it on paper. Mr. Johnson suggests that I have misunderstood the conversation with the superintendent with PCC Builders, also named Andy, regarding the future ADU above the garage. I assure you, this concern was not stated to be divisive. The entire conversation went like this. After Andy and I resolved the parking issue, he stated that the owners have an aunt, who is the designer on the project, and that after the house is completed, they will be applying for an ADU above the garage. And if that aunt had jokingly stated that she would like to live in it, I don't know how I could misconstrue the content of that conversation. Regardless, while I can only trust Mr. Johnson's statement that the structural engineering will not support an ADU, you can understand why it still concerns me, as he also initially stated in the building permit that the garage would be built within the original site plan. I'm wondering what has changed.
Thank you for your comments, and and your time is up. We did get your written comments entered into the record, and all of the council members read them. Are there any other members of the public today that would care to comment? And just so you know, there is a second round of public comment where folks can add additional comments and have three more minutes. There's another commenter from Andre Mazer. And you might be muted on your end, Andre.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. My name is Andre Mazer. I live at 471 East Rain Tree Court, Lewisville. I've lived and worked in Lewisville since 1999. It's where I raised my family, paid my taxes, and where I plan to retire. I purchased 720 Jefferson in 2005 with the thought of retiring there someday. The narrow size of the lot was a concern when I purchased. However, I was advised by the city of Lewisville that I could actually purchase the vacated alleyway to the south and that neither myself nor the owner, excuse me, neither myself nor the owner to the south could build on this strip of land. I paid for the entire cost of this vacation of the alleyway myself, as the other two owners did not want to incur any expense. I'm amazed that such a talented, revered, and highly influential architect such as Andy Johnson could not design a property to the south on two-and-a-half-city lots that would fit without impacting my house, which is built on a city lot just 27 and a half feet wide. If Andy Johnson applied any of his respectful approach to 809 Main Street to this development, I believe we would not be having this 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 discussion tonight. Clearly, building a garage so close to my own property has detrimental effects on the ability to rent my home and to my enjoyment of the property and the restriction of natural sunlight when I eventually move in. I also do not understand how the city planning department can allow this strip of land to be developed when they told me that it could not. Should this proposal go ahead, I will be quick to engage my good friend in real estate attorney and take the necessary legal action required to make the city of Lewisville and the owners of 701 Pine Street fully accountable for their actions. The city of Lewisville's Old Town Overlay Plan is designed to keep the integrity of Old Town and avoid the construction of larger homes. I am so puzzled why this overlay plan is so often breached by owners and architects who seem to have no sympathy to the neighbors surrounding these developments. I hope the members of the city council take heed of their decision on this matter, as I fear it is setting a precedent for the rest of Old Town and the people who live here. Respectfully, I request the council to deny the application of vacating the easement. As a side note, Andy Johnson mentioned that he reached out to the neighbors. I've never heard from Andy Johnson. The only correspondence I had from the neighbors was through their real estate agent this week, who offered me a price on my house, well below market value, I hasten to add. So I am somewhat disappointed that no conversations have taken place. Thanks for your time, and I hope you make the right decision.
Thank you for your comments. Any other members of the public here to comment? That takes us back over to council questions, comments, and discussion. I just want to let folks know as an aside to this application that the city council is aware of a number of conflicts and concerns about mass and height and setbacks in Old Town, and we're taking on an endeavor to engage the community around what those values should be, because oftentimes something will meet our requirements but doesn't meet the neighborhood's expectations, and it's happening more and more frequently. So we have on our work plan a community conversation around that. And I hope everyone who's at this meeting tonight is able to engage in that conversation when the time comes. Any council discussion on the ordinance and application in front of us this evening? Councilmember Lay?
Yeah. The last kind, I appreciate the comments of all all of the people who've spoken. I am a little concerned with my request, given the comments of Mr. Mazer, but I think I can ask this in a way that will be oh, okay. And but at any rate, the question is a question to our city attorney Kelly. And and by all means, Kathleen, if the question is better discussed in an executive session, then I will leave it to you to to advise us. But the real simple question I have is what is the legal standard that we are applying tonight in our decision?
Thank you, Councilmember Lay. Well, the council's decision whether or not to vacate any right-of-way or easement is discretionary. And what the council would need to find is that the the vacation requested is not and will not be needed for any public governmental or utility purpose. And that's set forth in the recitals to the ordinance before you this evening.
And when you say it is discretionary, can you elaborate a little bit about that? Yeah.
Sure. I I think what you're asking is, do we have a process in the code with specific criteria to be applied to applications for vacations? And that is no. Under the statute, a city can vacate rights of way and including easements that are no longer necessary for any governmental or public purpose. And so that's the the finding that the council should be focused on when it considers this request. You know, I know it's not part of your question, but, you know, my understanding is that, you know, setbacks are met for this project, and vacating an easement does not affect the property line that exists. It so easements don't aren't considered in terms of the setback. So whether So whether or not the council vacates this easement would allow for the garage to be built, but the garage already had to meet the setbacks in the city's zoning code.
And I appreciate that. So I guess one of my questions then would be for Director Zakaro, where, I mean, actually either Director Zakaro or Ms. Hassan about what the potential need is for this easement. Because I mean, obviously, it was there for the reasons that the materials have talked about. But I mean, if it's discretionary with the council, I think it's incumbent on us to ask the question of whether, irrespective of the other conflict that's going on, because that that is not what I'm focused on. I'm focused on whether it is appropriate to be vacating an easement that we've had for some time when we may have a public need of it in the future. And so maybe if one of you could, could provide some, some background or some information around that, I'd sure appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Ellie, do you want to answer that and I'll fill in any gaps?
Sure. Sorry, I'm coming back on. So when we originally looked at this, we, Attorney Kelly was correct where we did look for, for, there aren't findings necessarily in the municipal code, but we did look to see if any sort of basically stakeholders in the easement would need the easement currently or in the future. So what we did as part of the process of this is we did refer this out to any interested utilities such as Excel as well as Century Link and Comcast. We didn't hear back from Century Link and Comcast, but from what we did hear from Excel, they didn't indicate any future need for that easement from the letter we received from them. And then as well as we contacted Public Works within our department, within our city, and they had similar response to it. So from our findings and from the documentation we've received, it doesn't appear that this easement will be needed in the future. And then I'll let Rob elaborate if there is anything else.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think that covers it all. Again, we, there's no existing utilities in the easement to be vacated and there was no request to preserve the easement into the future from either our Public Works Department or any of the utilities.
Is, is there any, I know, I just want to sort of cover the the field here. Is there any other potential use of that easement that the city reasonably might make of it besides what you've, you've discussed and you've inquired about?
Right, yeah. We're not aware of any. I think the developments, the, I mean, it's a, it's a already developed area. You know, every, everybody has access to utility hookups with existing easements with the reservation of the easement on the east side. So we're not aware of anything. I mean, there's all, you know, I can never predict a hundred percent into the future, but there's nothing that anybody's aware of or can anticipate that that easement would be needed for from a utility perspective.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Lay. I appreciate your deliberate nature in going through your questions. And I just have framed it a little differently in my mind, and I think this is, in some senses, very straightforward and in other sense, it's very complicated. And so there's a couple of complications on this that we're really not talking about tonight, but they do enter into the equation for the easement. One is that the sewer line and that the lines cross another homeowner's property. And this does happen from time to time in Old Town, but we really try not to do that. So this is a uniquely circum, this is a unique circumstance where you have someone else's sewer line on your property. And this is a redevelopment, so there is an opportunity to correct that. And so you could make an argument that you could use such an easement to correct that. I'm sure, you know, Andy alluded to the fact that there were a number of iterations with Public Works where they looked at the configurations of the hookup. And so we can ask the Public Works Director and Andy for more information on that hookup with the water lines if we want, but there is, there is an interesting point there around the directionality of the hookup. There's another issue that, you know, hasn't really been discussed or brought to, like, Councilmember Lay along your line of questioning, and that's around the alley. So in a block over, you know, in a similarly situated area where you have homes facing pines, they've maintained that back alley with the, with access for the garages. And that's a public benefit. And so that brings a question to my mind, hearing the testimony tonight. Would the property owner to the north have consented to vacating the alley, which changed the lot line, if they were under the impression that the home could be built in this space? And what the testimony we heard was that the, what was communicated to him at this time, at least this was the testimony we heard this evening, is that there wouldn't be building in that space. So you sort of go back and say, well, if the contemplation would have been that, yes, people can, it does change the lot line, so it does change the setback, then I would wonder if the property owner would have vacated the alley or if they would have said that they had a use for the alley and objected to that vacation in the first place. So I think that is a public benefit if, if you wanted to have alley access serving these homes so they would have off-street parking instead of having to park on pine. And so I do think it's more complicated than perhaps it seems on its face. And I'll be interested to hear the deliberation around all the complicated issues that persist. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thanks. Yeah, I appreciate that perspective, Mayor, and same with Councilmember Lay. You know, it's, obviously, this is, it's really important to people because it's their properties, it's their homes. It's, I understand why this is important. At the same time, you know, from, from both perspectives, we're talking about two feet, right? And so there's a bit of me that's like, you know, Mr. Johnson, you can't, you can't move it over two feet. And the same thing, you know, with Mr. Mazer. It's just, it's two feet. I mean, you're going to have a building close to your home. Does, is two feet really change the enjoyment of your home? And so from just a neighborly perspective, it just seems like a lot to do about two feet. I think the bigger issue is that a garage is being built where there's currently or was currently a field or open space behind that house, and that, that presence of a building is going to change that experience for sure. And I don't, I don't know that the two feet is decided, decidedly different. But I think Councilmember Lay was kind of alluding to this. I, you know, I'm sensitive to the neighbor's experience, but I was definitely looking at it from sort of the outline of the property and, you know, we have a three-foot setback for all of our properties in this area where, you know, you can't build within three feet. And so I can understand why I would look at a property and say, well, I would, I just want to build to within three feet. Why can't I build into these last two feet? What is the purpose? Why am I not being allowed to build in this two feet? And the answer isn't because your neighbor doesn't want that. The answer has to be because that easement is important and you are being asked not to build on that easement for a reason. And I'm not seeing a compelling reason to keep a property owner from building how any other property owner would build in the area to, up to three feet from their property line. So, you know, I'm, I think that I'm struggling because I feel like this could be solved with moving that building two feet south, that I don't understand the benefit for the, for the, for the new construction to create this issue. But I can also, they designed it like assuming they could get to that, that extra two feet, and two feet is two feet. So I'm, you know, I'm inclined to, to be okay with this vacation because I can't really, I don't have a good argument for, I think, as pointed out, why the city would need it, why utilities would need it, why any one who has a right to that easement would need it. So why wouldn't we let them build a normal build out? But then I just feel bad for the neighbors. And, and I think I feel bad that a building is being built at all. But that's, that's not really the point tonight. And so that's kind of where I'm sitting, but it's, it's difficult. It is complicated, Mayor.
Councilmember Lay.
Yeah, I guess what I would do is to ask Director Corr to to address the, the question that the mayor raised. I mean, I would, I would say that you know, you presumably have, have looked at the request, I, or the, the the request for the vacation and and evaluated, but maybe I shouldn't put words in your mouth. Can you describe your own thoughts about that? And whether we ought to, you know, I, I want to make sure it's not a matter of favoring or disfavoring the stakeholders here as much as it is. This easement was granted, easement's about use of that. I want to make sure that when, if and when we give it up, it's not going to come back to bite in the sense of, gee, I wish we had actually kept that alive so that we could do something to it, whether it's the, you know. Well, yeah, and so I guess there's that, and I suppose there's a question in the sewer line too. So if you could, if you could address those couple of things, because I think the mayor raises good points. It's, you know, but she's not, she's not staff and we need to think about what the support is, if any, for keeping or, you know, exercising our discretion reasonably. Because I think that I would presume is, is kind of what we're all after.
Absolutely. I'd do my best. I don't want to do a disservice to this conversation, so I will say Craig Duffin, our city engineer, is more in tune with this topic. And it wasn't necessarily as much on my radar, but to answer the question, alleys, we generally serve sewer through alleys and the water's generally in the front. In this case, the, at the, all the properties are still able to be served in a manner for sewer. And so it doesn't affect any other utilities and that utilities left hole. So, and Craig generally goes very in-depth on all reviews we do. So I do trust his opinion. Again, my head's not in the details of this one, so just for transparency. So I'm comfortable with the recommendation of my department and planning around this topic.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council members before we go back over to the public? Councilmember Lipton. You're muted.
So I am, sorry. Page 384 of the packet. There's a, actually a photograph that shows the fence pile of dirt and the neighbor's house. And I'm just curious, the, there's a drainpipe coming down from the neighbor's house. And I'm not sure exactly where that's going and what the drainage plan is for that area, whether the drainage actually goes into that easement that we're talking about.
Thank you. So is there a staff member prepared this evening to address whether or not there's a storm drainage component to the easement? Director Zakaro?
I don't know. I don't believe that the easement was reserved for drainage. I think it was for utility. But if, if any of the other planning staff members have insight on that, that's my understanding as a specific to utilities and not drainage.
Yeah, so I have a copy of the easement pulled up. And so the specific language is easements are hereby reserved over, under, through, and across the alley right of way for the operation, maintenance, repair, and replacement of existing and future public utilities. So it doesn't, it did not reserve access and it doesn't specifically mention drainage. When we looked kind of at the background of this, when the vacation occurred in 2006, there is the existing Excel, you know, overhead line within there. And so the, the request came at the, for reservation of the utility easement came at the request of Excel. It, back in 2006, there were no known city utilities within their planned or existing.
Lisa, thanks. But I'm still curious, where does the drainage go?
So you're talking about the drainage from the property to the north?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's something we haven't looked at.
I think we'd have to research that to find out that answer. We don't know.
So I would assume that drainage has to be accommodated, notwithstanding what we decide to do tonight. But looking at the building plans then for the garage, if, you know, that occurs?
Yeah, so any new construction would need to meet, you know, all of our drainage regulations as far as not draining and impacting onto adjacent property. And so, yeah, the site, the site grading for the new construction would need to meet, would need to meet building codes and drainage, things like that. We aren't currently looking at the existing drainage on the property at 720 Jefferson. We don't have any active work occurring on that property.
I want to thank Planner Hassan for putting up the image, just so everybody would be on the same page about what we were looking at. That's very helpful. Thank you.
And I just want to clarify too, that for a lot of development like this, that's not part of the subdivision with the master drainage plan, we typically don't review kind of overlot drainage. I mean, we review drainage away from foundations for building code, but in Old Town, you know, getting a drainage plan and report for kind of that overlot drainage is not typically part of our review process.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And I may be going off the reservation just a slight bit on this, but my, whether it's part of this review or part of view of the garage, once you get a formal submit on that, I think that, like in my neighborhood, neighbors have a common drainage between the homes that go down downhill, get to the streets. And I don't want anything we do tonight or is done in the future to then adversely affect that homeowner that has that drainage system already installed. And my interest and my concern is that there's a reliance on that, on that little strip of land to convey that drainage somewhere. And I guess, you know, nobody seems to know. But the improvements are there. The pipe is there. It looks like there's a grate along the sidewalk or the walkway. And I'm very interested to know where all that drainage then goes.
Councilmember Lipton, are you asking your question of the applicant? Because it looks like they're eager to provide a response. And then just remember, members of the public, you'll have a chance at another round of public comment.
Sure, Mayor. I was just asking staff, but if the applicant has more information, staff, I would be happy to help.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Lipton, I'd be happy to answer that question. So two things, the photo that was shown shows the neighbor to the north's fence, which actually is not on their property line. It's actually north of their property line. And the construction fence is a little closer to what that property line actually is. So every property is responsible to handle their own drainage without crossing property lines. The 701 site plan is intended to swale along the property line and along the side of the garage and the driveway. And primarily, most of that is conveyed to Jefferson. We do this in a number of different ways. The building department requires a drainage certificate or a letter from a civil engineer at the end of the project to demonstrate that that's been done. So, you know, those, those are things that the city does look at, it does get answered and will be done appropriately as we've done on, on all of our projects in the past.
So, so nothing that you're going to be doing would impair the ability of the existing neighbor to convey their drainage down that strip line?
I can't speak for the neighbor in terms of what their, their plans are or what they, what the intent is. However, that swell would be able to handle the load of the water coming off of that roof adequately as sort of like a, you know, kind of a shared space between. But technically, they are responsible for handling their own drainage on their own property.
Sure, I get that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Lipton, do you have any other questions this evening?
No, not right here.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. The, the question I have is for the applicant. Are there, are there any alternatives?
Can you be more specific?
Well, I mean, we're being, yeah, we're being asked to vacate a right of way, an easement. Are there any design alternatives where we wouldn't have to consider vacating a right of way?
It would, it would primarily be keeping the garage within that five foot easement. I do, I do want to say one thing. I'm very familiar with this neighborhood. I've built a number of homes or designed a number of homes in this area. I have vacated alleys. I have vacated easements prior to all of you being on council and, and, and I'm just stating that because it goes way back. When alley vacations occur in Old Town, they are handled in varying degrees. There are not, we do not always have utility easements. We have some alley vacations that should have utility easements, that never had utility easements. I'm dealing with that on two, two properties right now across Pine Street near this property. And we have found sewer lines in old vacated alleys that were not documented and now are documented. My point is that the, the way this alley was vacated was done in a way that basically said, okay, there are utilities, so let's take the strip from Jefferson to the alley and just call it a utility easement. It was not investigated. It was not looked at where the sewer lines were. But it was, it was done. Other parts of town do partial easements or no easements. And so there's a real irregularity in terms of how this goes. We did our homework. We did do, actually with two different sewer scope companies and found out where all the placements are in terms of the main sewer line, where the neighbors tie into it and how it goes east and flows to the alley. So, you know, I, I guess the, I guess the point is that, you know, we have a large portion of both seven oh one and the neighbor to the north that really can be vacated with, with no no potential issues for city services or public services. You know, needing to use that alley so, or you needing to use that easement. The easement is not a setback and it, if it's an encumbrance, you know, or unnecessary, you know, this is the opportunity to look at that and and remove it.
Thank you. Any other council questions, comments, or discussion before we go to our final public comment period on this agenda item? All right, seeing none, we'll turn it back over to the members of the public. And so people will have three minutes to tell us what they would like to tell us. This is your final opportunity on this agenda item to tell us what you'd like to tell us. And the first commenter is Andre Mazzier.
I want to address a couple of issues that we've never had any drainage issues with this house. It's drained very well. My concern is if you built the garage so close to my house, the pitch of the roof of that garage is north facing and that load is going to come straight down towards our house. And the actual slope goes to the back, not to the front. So that means you're going to be doing some kind of, I don't know, how are you going to do that? But it, it could cause problems. It could cause moisture penetration. And then addressing Caleb's comment, you know, I get it, two feet, what's the big deal? But the big deal is we're only on twenty-seven and a half feet and these guys are on two and a half city lot. You know, that's a big difference. And that if you look at those plans, maybe they could squeeze their swimming pool in a little bit more. I mean, this is Old Town Lewisville, you know, it's not White Hawk Ranch. And, and, and talk about the overlay plan and the integrity of the town. When, when did we sign up for swimming pools downtown? You know, I, I've lived in this town for twenty-one years. And I'm really getting a little frustrated with the way it's being developed. We had the rules, but they keep getting, they keep getting twisted. And that's just not, I just don't think that's right. And I don't think it's what the members of our, our town actually signed up for when they signed up the overlay, signed, signed up for the overlay plan. And I think it's, it's time that you guys took some responsibility here and and stood up to the people that are moving from out of state, buying these lots and then just pushing the small guys out. I, I just don't think it's right. And you know, I'm really hoping that you, you look at what's going on here before you make a decision. Two feet is not a big deal, but it's the bigger picture of what's happening to this town. And Andy Johnson talks about the narrow lot in eight oh nine Main Street and and, and keeping the integrity of the historic society, using, you know, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of taxpayers' money to do it. It, 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 there's double standards going on here. I think it would be quite easy to just go back to the, to the five foot and, and let them build the garage and move on. And that's how easy it would be. Andy's an intelligent guy. He can squeeze that in. And that, that's really all I've got to say.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would care to comment? The next commenter is Jim Tisso.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I am. I understand Mr. Mazur's about the garage, especially about the height. To my direct west of my house is the highest part of the neigh, the new neighbor's house. So I'm already losing a lot of sun, especially in the winter. So I just, and, and my concern is with the garage is that it, I, I think the plans would call twenty feet high. We, I really don't need to lose any more sunlight if, if they, if the plans happen to change and it goes over that twenty feet. So you know, I'm just kind of looking at the integrity of keeping, not going any higher than that. It just seems like there's a lot of out out of my control in terms of how this whole thing went out, went up really fast after the neighbor sold the land. So I, I am sympathetic to Mr. Mazur completely. I feel that it's already been an anxious situation with with the, with my property line going to need to be, well, which is, which is noted in terms of the east, the west fence of mine. But anyway, that's another issue that I think will be covered later on. But I agree with in, in terms of the historical preservation, it's more of a human situation with, with myself being that with the history of this, of this community, you know, people relied on each other, neighbors relied on each other. And it does seem like it's getting out of hand with all of the scrapings going on. And it is a bit disheartening, especially when you take a look at why people live here philosophically. Philosophically, for me, it's just like it's the best place I could ever have to appreciate my roots. But with somebody else just looking at it to make the next step up on economic chain, it's, it's, it's not really in line with the historical preservation of our, of the culture of this place. So being, being, that being said, I just want to make sure that that there are good neighbors and that this doesn't this, this ends up becoming a positive thing, but there are a lot of concerns. And I appreciate Mr. Mazur's comments. Thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is the phone number ending in seven one seven eight. We have you unmuted now. Can you hear us? You might be muted on your end.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
This is Valerie from seven twenty Jefferson. I'm sorry, I don't remember which one of the council members asked Andy the question of if there was an alternative to building into the easement. I'd just like to state that there is an alternative to that. And Lisa, if you could speak to your comment about if this easement is not vacated, that Andy would still be able to build the garage inside the original site plan? That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. And so this is the end of the public comment period. If anyone had wanted to comment, this would be the last chance to raise your hand so we could get you on the record this evening. All right, seeing none, that takes us back over for our, our final council deliberation on this topic. And I just want to reiterate what I opened with as an aside, that there have been a lot of comments around the overlay district and the zoning district that aren't really what we're talking about tonight, but the council does recognize that's a major issue and community character is a major issue. And so that is something we're taking up this year and asking for public feedback and input on, so we can ensure that our codes and our zoning reflect what the community wants. And so please do engage on that topic when the time comes, but we'll get back to the discussion around if there's a public purpose for this easement tonight and have some more deliberation around that. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor, again for reframing. And I, I, I think that it is, it's really, it's really difficult. I, I, I understand. You know, I think my, like, personal opinion is like, yeah, let's, let's move the garage two feet south because that's just, that's just better. It just feels better, but I can't, I'm not comfortable applying that emotion to the, the rules here. And I, and I get that in the current situation, they are not allowed to build in that easement. We have to do something here today to allow that to happen. And so it feels like a council action to allow a homeowner to build a swimming pool, which is not what we're doing, right? We're, what we're doing is, are they allowed to build on their own property within three feet of the property line when there's an easement in place? And so that's, that's what we're discussing. And so for me, I can't give a good answer within this situation for why they need to respect the easement when they're building this garage, what those two feet mean to the city and why there's an easement. It's an unnecessary restriction on this property when that's all I'm looking at. So I, I do want to be clear that I'm making my decision based on that information, that I, I have to apply that equally to, to everyone and, and, and that the, the fee, the emotional part for me is just, I, I, I can't, I can't make that decision based on that. So whether the house is taller than I want it to be, or the swimming pool is what I want it to be, or the garage is the size I want, none of those things are what we're considering. And so while I may be convinced by the neighbors that it's not the best design for, for them and for the, that area, I, I'm still, I'm still feeling like, I, I have to I, I'm feeling like I need to allow for them to build on their property within three feet of the property line without any need for the easement from the city or the utility. So I'm just restating, but just really want to be compassionate to all the neighbors.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I, you know, I think that the way that I've been thinking about this, and I haven't said anything to, to this point in this discussion, just the way I've been thinking about this is, what is the purpose of an easement? What are the purpose of setbacks in other parts of our overtown overlay? And, you know, the purpose of this easement is really about utilities and, and utility access. And you know, for better, for worse, if we ask the utility companies, including our own city utilities, whether they need the easement, and they say no, then i- at any point in the future, then I, I'm sort of, the, the evidence as a, as a, as a, in a quasi judicial setting such as this, is that's weighs heavily on my decision. I also am very mindful of the comments that the neighbors have made about light and about encouragement upon their property. But unfortunately, I've had many discussions actually with residents in, in Ward three about additions and other, other aspects of adjacent properties shielding light from people's homes. And, and I'm very sensitive to those things, but in these particular cases, the, the criteria that I feel like I am asked to weigh in on is those are outside the criteria. And so, you know, we, we should not use easements as an, as a placeholder for a setback, even if the outcome in this particular case is less than desirable. You know, setbacks should be setbacks and easements should be easements and we, they have different purposes. And so I'm very much interested in the comments that you made and Mayor about the about our, our comprehensive look at the, the Old Town overlay and the criteria as well as grade and other things. There's a lot of things that need to go into that to make sure that the expectation expectations of the neighbors are being met. But I think in this particular case, kind of bound by the purpose of easements and the purpose of this particular discussion. And so I'm going to have to vote to, to vacate the easement.
Thank you. And not seeing any other hands all weigh in. I, I really appreciate the comments and discussion so far. You know, and, and I, I respect what everyone's saying and, and just respectfully have a different perspective. So, you know, we, as we heard from the Public Works Director, we run our sewer utilities to the alleys. And in this case, this property doesn't have alley access. So the sewer line is running across the neighbor's lot because we vacated the alley that historically ran behind these homes. And in other homes that front to pine, they've maintained the alley. And that has the benefit of providing sewer access in the alley so that we are putting, you know, our public sewer lines on the public alley. It has the benefit of the utility collection for waste disposal, trash, compost, recycling to be happening in the alley rather than on the front street. So by building the, you know, project as proposed, this will put trash collection on the main front street instead of in the alley as is done in Old Town. And so, I mean, I think that's another reason to have not vacated the alley in the first place. But there is a public benefit of that easement. And I really do wonder if, if everyone knew this was the outcome if the alley would have ever been vacated in the first place. I just don't think that it would have. I think people would have seen the benefit of the alley that you wouldn't have to rent a sewer line across a neighbor's property. That can cause a number of issues. We've seen that in other cases of town. There's going to be undergrounding issues for the Comcast utilities in the future. I, I just see a number of potential issues, even, you know, with our stormwater utility, as Councilmember Lipton brought up, there are potential issues around historical conveyances. And while property owners are responsible for their own conveyance, historical conveyances are maintained and, and, you know, nothing's being done to this historic property. So I just see a number of potential issues and I can see a public benefit, a potential need for this easement all the way as the alley originally was presented. And I, you know, Director Core just wasn't, he, he came for a different agenda item tonight and, you know, let us know that his staff reviewed this. And I have confidence in the staff too, that they've tried to come up with a solution that will work. Because in Old Town, the lot lines are funny, like there are a number of issues, there are a number of problems. So they do have to come up with these solutions because people have to be able to live their life and enjoy their home. But I don't think that vacating this alley gives us the most flexibility that we could need in the future if we need to relocate that sewer line so that it doesn't cross a neighbor's property. I think Uh, if we need to relocate that sewer line so that it doesn't cross a neighbor's property. Um, I think getting rid of this creates some potential problems. Or what if we can't go back to the alley and we need to bring all the neighbors' lines through this property? So I just am not convinced that we don't need this easement at this point. And I really do appreciate everybody's comments and recognize how challenging this is. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this is one of those things I, you know, after each one of you spoke, I've agreed with you. And my thinking is, is evolving and so forth. And, um, you know, I, I had a serious question. Are there alternatives? And the reason why I asked that question? The mayor just articulated plenty of reasons for that. You know, I've been on city council. This is my sixth year. There are three city councillors who've been on longer than me. So in that, in my tenure and their tenure, we've vacated a lot of right of ways and easements. And we've done it in places where it's made sense. We haven't had utilities and it, and it doesn't have the level of complexity that this one can, or or potential future complexity. So that's why I asked the question, are there alternatives? You know, what we're trying to do is find a solution that makes sense. You know, if we, and, and I appreciate the work that, that staff has done too. But I'm, I'm, I'm getting to that place where the mayor is, is like, what, what might we use for that future? We do have issues with utilities in those areas. So giving up real estate is one of those things that you have to take very seriously because it's permanent. You know, giving up that right away. So I'm, I'm not settled on how I would vote on this if we were to take a vote right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion or debate from folks who haven't had a chance to weigh in? And I'll come back to you, Councilmember Dickinson. I'm just trying to get folks who haven't had a chance to weigh in yet. Give them an opportunity. No? All right, Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, I appreciate, I guess I'm just, I'm a little confused by it. I mean, Mayor, you're talking about an actual physical alley, which I think we know isn't, I mean, that's already been vacated. We're never going to have trash running down that area, right? That, that 10-foot alley that used to exist, like, so that's not a possible future use. And, and whether they build the garage where they're planning or two feet to the south, that's never going to be a, an alley again. There's an easement for utilities, so we could run utilities down there. But again, I'm confused at what you took, like, we, the water's already going out to the street and the sewer's already going to the alley between Jefferson and Lafarge through the easement that the utility easement, like with the design, it's using the utility easement to get to the alley. So I'm confused at how we would ever use. And, and that's what the city has said, and that's what Excel said, and that's what and we, we aren't going to suddenly do a line from Jefferson to the alley through that space. There's, there's no reasonable need for that. And so I, I guess I'm just confused by those comments because, I mean, that's, that's what the report is saying is that they're not going to need this utility easement. And so that's why I'm basing my decision on is not, I, I guess maybe you're just disagreeing with whether they're going to need it, but I'm not understanding the, the situation in which they would need to run utilities east to west on that part of the lot. And you keep saying about going through the neighbor's property, but it's going through the neighbor's property on the east through the easement. That's on that neighbor's property, like, is that correct? I mean, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's traveling through the current easement through the property on the east, which is why we have the utility easement. But that's happening no matter what, like where there's no, the location of the garage isn't going to change that fact. So I guess maybe if you, if there's more clarification, I see Jeff has his hand up, but I'm just trying to get, just trying to understand the hesitancy because you obviously, you obviously have some.
Councilmember Lipton?
Uh, thanks. Well, this is, this is a kind of a tough one. And I've been doing this either through planning commission or city council for 29 years. And I've always been fairly reluctant to give up right of way easements, you know, I, you know, to me, these are kind of conveyances to the city. There's got to be real compelling benefits to the city to convince me to give up an easement. And I'm not seeing where that is for this particular proposal. I, you know, I don't put a lot of weight on what Excel or CenturyLink or Comcast may say today what their future needs are here, because I don't think they look at it very carefully. And, um, so I don't know what the future holds and what the future will bring and what we might need. You know, this easement with this land for in the future, but, um, I'm, I'm reluctant just to give it up. And you know, so at this point, I guess I'm unconvinced that we have to. I think there are stronger benefits to the city to retain these sorts of easements than just to give them up. And I've seen these come up for utility, for purposes of development, for purposes of putting up fences, for purposes of planting trees. I mean, I, I've, I've seen different proposals and different ways of trying to get the city to give up these various utilities. But I'm, I'm always generally reluctant to give them up. I'm not sure, unconvinced I'd want to give this one up. Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. And the other discussion? I think it is, you know, challenging for everybody. That's clear through the discussion. If there's any more light, people can shed, shine on it. That would be helpful. Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I, um, thank you, Mayor. I, uh, hearing your comments, hearing councilmember Lipton's comments, hearing councilmember Maloney's comments, um, you know, it, it is, it strikes me that, uh, you know, our utility companies may not be so forward looking, may not understand their future needs. It's hard to anticipate what future needs might be. And so now I really am, uh, more torn than I was before. So, um, I also take, uh, councilmember Lipton's comments very seriously, which are, which is that, um, given the uncertainty, given the uncertainty that we have and the various reasons why people want to vacate these, you know, for all kinds of reasons that it may, it, it, there may, there may need to be a compelling reason. And I think one of the challenging things is here is that we don't have strict criteria within our code as to how to review these. So, uh, I'll just leave it, I'll leave it at that, um, at this point and, and, uh, continue to think about it here for a few more moments.
Thank you. Councilmember Lay?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I, I did ask at the beginning of, of my own, uh, comments before what the standard is for deciding this. And, um, I guess, uh, one, one question that I, I would, I guess I want a little bit more, a little finer clarification from the city attorney on this, if it's possible to do in this context. And if it's not at this point, either Mayor, you can stop me or, um, or the city attorney can stop me. Um, but I guess, you know, the, we've had discussion about what the original easement uh, grant says. And we've had some suggestions tonight that perhaps fall, some of them might fall within the easement language and some fall without. I mean, it would be pretty obvious if, for example, Excel or somebody had chimed in or Comcast or some, you know, pretty obvious, uh, utility company that might have needed it. But I, I recognize what councilmember Lipton just said, and I don't doubt it in the least. The lack of information isn't necessarily, uh, dispositive. And I suppose neither is the, you know, the, uh, the, in some respects, the lack of, uh, a, uh, Director Coar's, um, subordinate to be here tonight, which I, I don't fault anybody for. Um, to explain any, any discrepancy there. But I, what I'm wondering is does the mere fact that the, um, that the easement language speaks in terms of of utilities, is that, um, are, are we? Are we properly exercising our discretion to, uh, keep that easement if there's no immediate articulable need for, uh, uh, keeping the easement based on on the need for this as, uh, for utility purposes?
Um, yeah, thank you for the question. So the, the finding is that the easement for which vacation is requested is not and will not be needed for any public governmental or utility purpose. So there's no immediacy requirement. If the council sees that there may be a need for the easement in the future, then the council may not find that, that that is met. Um,
Yeah. And, and thank you. That's, that's what I was interested in. Um, because I think, I mean, I think it's important that we make proper findings, whatever we do here. But, um, I, I think the fact that we don't find some immediate need for an easement or for a easement for utility purposes is, that's not, that's not the standard that we have to meet. It sounds like under the, um, under under the, the legal standard we're supposed to be applying in the using discretion. If there is a public purpose that we can, that may not be immediate, um, then I, I think I am, and I think that Mayor has articulated a number of those kinds of, uh, purposes. I think I'm inclined uh, to vote, provided that we make those, those findings to vote against, um, the, the resolution vacating. I think, uh, I, I'm reticent to let go of that kind of an interest too, unless there's some incredibly compelling reason. And I, you know, once you let go of it, you don't get it back. Done. And, um, I just am not convinced that we should let it go.
Councilmember Fagie?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm, I'm also swayed similar to, uh, Councilman Lay's and Councilman Lipton's most recent comments. The possibility that we could have a future need, a public need for this, and it may not be utilities, it may be something else. Is one point. The other point is that there is no compelling reason to vacate it. No compelling reason for the city to vacate. And so I would also uh, be voting against this resolution or this ordinance.
Not seeing any hands at this time. Um, procedurally, I'll ask the city attorney, uh, Councilmember Lay raised some comments about issuing findings. Um, procedurally, what would be the best path forward? Would it be, um, for someone to make a motion of approval of what's in our packet? Would it be to give direction for staff to come back with a different resolution of denial? What, what path is the appropriate path forward?
Right. So, um, I heard somebody mention a quasi judicial hearing, and I just want to clarify that this is not a quasi judicial matter. Um, so if you're going to vacate the easement, then you would do so for the reason that the easement is not needed for any current or future public purpose as found in the draft ordinance prepared for you. Uh, but if the, um, motion to approve the ordinance on second reading fails, then the council takes no action and the easement remains in place as it is today.
Thank you. And so as a matter of, you know, how to move the conversation along, someone could move to approve it and someone could second it. And just for clarification, a mover and a seconder don't have to vote in favor. Either the mover or the seconder can vote against something that they've made a motion on. And so if someone would make a motion.
Yeah, I'll move that we approve ordinance number 1806, series 2021.
Thank you. Thank you. There's a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion of the motion to approve ordinance 1806? I'm not seeing any other discussion. Is anyone unclear about what motion is on the table and what we're voting on? Is everyone clear? I should ask that. Is everyone clear? Yes. All right. With that, I'll close the public hearing and I'll ask for a roll call vote. Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah.
Councilmember Fagie?
No.
Councilmember Lay?
No.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
No.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
No. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our next order of business on our agenda, which is discussion direction on the Louisville Public Safety Improvements. So I just want to start, uh, before I turn it over to Megan Davis for a presentation with a couple of opening remarks. Um, so you, you all will remember at the starting of the meeting, I made some comments around George Floyd's murder and our, and our necessity to continue to work to improve. And so this public safety improvement project could come as a surprise to some people, but I just want to clarify for the record that what we're trying to do is ensure that public safety and justice in our community is done in a way where we approve access, enhance communication and train our officers in a way that the community and, and, you know, Americans would expect us to do, um, with the utmost care for ensuring equal access and, and justice for all. And so when we review this tonight, I just want to point out some of the details around training facilities, communication, um, you know, our officers have put care into having, um, uh, mental health experts on staff and have explored their, um, procedures and standards and our eliminating force in every avenue that's possible. And so as we look at this, we need to consider this with a lens toward equity and justice and consider how these improvements to the facility will facilitate the type of department that we want to see and make sure that as proud as we are of our police officers today because of the way that they act, not because they're police officers, but because they hold themselves to a high standard and are inclusive. We want to ensure that we have the training facilities and the types of communications needed in emergency preparedness going forward. Uh, so that being said, I'll turn it over to Megan Davis in our city manager's office, Deputy City Manager Davis, to give us a little presentation on how we can update our facilities to ensure that we're able to train the, train the force.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Um, Megan Davis, Deputy City Manager. I'm just going to give a brief overview of the proposed improvements. Um, this information is contained in your packet. Uh, more details on this issue starting on page, um, 389. And then I'll just, um, offer for the police chief and city manager to provide additional information if they'd like. Um, the 2019-2020 biennial budget included a capital improvement project for modifications to the police department in municipal courts building to support improved facilities for emergency response, meeting and training space and communication infrastructure. The project was carried forward to the fiscal year 2020 budget and is planned for completion this year. I think most of you have probably been to the PD basement and are aware of the current status of that space as a largely unfinished space. Uh, the goal of the project is to convert this space into usable space for the police department, courts and records, as well as other departments within the city. The goal of the project is to convert this space into usable space for the police department, courts and records, as well as other departments within the city. And as a public, as, as an opportunity for public safety partners and the public at, at large to access the space. After going through design, architectural designs and, and getting more information about refined design, we know that there's a funding shortfall now between what was budgeted and what's necessary to complete the project. Staff has pursued various options to fill this funding gap, including applying for grant funding through the State Department of Local Affairs and scaling the design for full and partial completion options for the project. The architect has provided options for completion and the city has received quotes for the cost of construction estimates at various levels based on that final design. And you can see those schematics in your packet. At this time, staff is, is seeking city council direction regarding additional funding for the project and at what level of completion or build out to proceed. I'll provide a quick overview of the two project options that we've presented in the memo. So option one includes partial build out and finishing of the basement, which would meet some of the most immediate needs of the police department. The project would include improvements to the city's FM radio broadcasting station to provide a designated state space and the communications infrastructure necessary to support that. Non-public restrooms for the staff and meeting space. Men's and women's showers and locker rooms, a sleep room, as well as a meeting space. The PD doesn't currently have a sleep room for officers, officers that may have to sleep on site due to an emergency and does not have enough lockers to accommodate the current numbers of officers at this time. There's no bathroom in the basement for the existing training space, so users must go upstairs to use the bathroom. Sorry, if you just pause one second, I just want to check in. Councilmember Lipton, do you want to just raise your question at the end or did you want to interject right here? I just want to make sure if you had a point you wanted to make right now that we don't miss it.
No, I'll wait till after Megan's presentation.
Thank you. I just was trying to make sure that you didn't have a question right there. Thanks.
Sure, thank you, Megan.
No problem. So this is the project that the city applied for DOLA funds for, but wasn't successful. The total project cost is six hundred and forty one thousand, six hundred and thirty nine for this option and would require an additional two hundred and sixty five thousand, seventy nine dollars beyond what's currently budgeted to complete. Option two represents the full finishing and completion of the basement build out and would provide fully functional space throughout. This would support current and future needs as well as provide some benefit of usable space by the community. The project would build on the improvements in option one and also provide two additional sleep room spaces, two additional public restrooms that would be ADA accessible for those using community space and meetings and training space. The basement is currently served by an elevator, so getting to the basement is accessible. Radio recording space for the FM radio station, community flex space for community meetings or meetings that would be open for, you know, public access. And then updated finishings on the existing training rooms, including the property and evidence room, the weight room, the workout area. The total project cost for option two is one million, five hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and an additional one million, one hundred and thirty three, eight hundred and sixty dollars is necessary to complete this option. There's some additional information in your packet regarding the current status of the capital improvement fund. And staff is seeking council input and direction on how to proceed with this project tonight. As I mentioned, we have police chiefs, chief days, Dave Hayes, city manager Ballser, who can provide additional information, and Kurt Cowherd, public works director, and Chris Neves, IT director can also answer questions as well. All we have at this time.
Thank you so much. And so we'll turn it over to public comment on this agenda item and ask folks if they'd care to comment on the improvements to the Public Safety and Justice Building. This is the only option to comment on this agenda item tonight, so I just want to give people a chance if they need to weigh in. All right, seeing that, we have some council member questions and comments. Councilmember Lipton?
Thank you to Megan. Thanks for the presentation. I, I have a number of comments and questions. And my first question is I think it would be instructive to counsel if somebody would review the history of this project and what the original cost estimates were. And I do remember this has been in our CIP for many years and for some reason, this has never been accomplished and the scope is increasing enormously. And I think it would be useful for us to understand when this first got on the CIP, what the first estimates are, were, and where we are tonight with this. So let's start with that and then I'll probably want to follow up.
Deputy Manager Davis?
Yeah, I think, I think Chief Hayes is probably the best to talk about the evolution of the project and Heather can chime in as well with I can't remember what year it initially was. I don't know. I don't think I was here, but I have been here through several conversations, so I just don't want to miss become that history.
Thirty fourteen, mute. It looks like the chief is on the attendee side. If you could unmute him so he can let us know what he'd like to, that'd be great.
He has been unmuted.
Great.
Can you guys hear me okay?
We sure can. Thanks, Chief.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. This is Dave Hayes, police chief, and Councilman Lipton is correct. I'm trying to remember the first year, probably twenty fifteen. I came in fourteen, so I don't think it was in fourteen that we did this. We initially, the initial estimate that, that Councilman Lipton is talking about was with an architect that the city used at the time. It was a pretty basic addition to the basement. It was not a complete finish. And I'm trying to remember now, Councilman Lipton, I, I think it may have even been in the low two hundred thousand dollars ballpark about what the original estimate was. And I, I think we, at, at that time, made some requests, made some CIP requests. And then as things got more expensive and we kind of moved more towards, do we want a, a partially finished basement or do we want a a fully finished basement or one that would match the upstairs? I think that accounts for a lot of the, the cost increase. And I'm not convinced either, Councilman Lipton, that I think we initially came back maybe with two hundred thousand. I think you questioned it at the time during a budget process. I think we got another estimate then, and I think it probably brought, raised it another hundred thousand or two. And, and then just didn't, just with other, other things going on, both in the city and in the police department, it just was a project that we just didn't, didn't get completed. And now this past couple, past couple of years, had more time to devote to it, hired a separate architect to really design it so it would match and it would meet our current needs and needs for the next five to ten years. And that's what brought us to today. But I think you are correct, Council, Councilman Lipton, it was significantly less expensive, but the project was also significantly less at the time.
Thank you. Yeah, my, my comments aren't, aren't a criticism of the police department, certainly not of the chief. This is more the way the city has handled this project in its entire organization. And I feel as a council member, I kind of got baited and hooked on this. And this goes back like six, at least six years. And now, you know, it's one of these things where it just keeps growing and growing and growing. The price goes up and up and up. And there's something wrong. It should be a lesson for us because this is what happens when we don't adequately from the conceptual design to further levels in design, do not just the design, but the cost estimates accurately. So, you know, these things start as, well, let's just put a placeholder in the CIP, but that placeholder then turns out to be two or three or four times what we originally thought it would be when we put the placeholder in CIP. And there's something wrong with that process. And I also want to say this is not about our, you know, diversity, equity and inclusion issues as a city. This is about what the city police department needs to work effectively and take care of its force. And things like having the workout room and having a conference room, having bathrooms, things like that. Those are the things that interested us because we want to support the police department. Now we're coming back with this option two, which has never been discussed with us, has never been on the table. Never been included in CIP. And all of a sudden, the scope has grown again. And it's not to serve the PD necessarily. Now we're trying to build out community space. Well, this is something that really needs to be thought of and balanced in the context of the larger CIP. Because we don't know, do we want to spend another million or a million, one point, one point, one million dollars on this? Or are there other things in the CIP? This is coming to us very incrementally. And to be honest, I'm very unhappy with the process. It might be a good project, sure, but, you know, we haven't looked at it in the context of looking at other good projects. So I'm very disappointed this is coming to us in this form. For option one, it's fairly consistent with what we've talked about. I'm very unhappy and I have been unhappy and I've been critical in the past about you know, how that project has been designed and cost estimated and presented to us time and time again with cost increases. That's a different concern than I have with option number two, which is totally, totally different scope and concept and brought to us outside the regular CIP process. So I'll have more comments, but that's how I'm starting. Thank you.
And thanks for the comments, Councilmember Lipton. I would like to turn down the temperature on the conversation and, you know, we can all have our different views about this and, and definitely reasonable to be critical if you feel that way, but just if we can turn down the temperature so we can debate the differences. I think that's helpful. I, I respectfully disagree that this is about equity and inclusion. We have raised the bar on the police and we've asked them to, to evaluate how they train the officers and approach policing in our community so that we ensure we have community policing. And, you know, they've, they're doing that and they're training and they're, these are the types of facilities we want to be building. This is not military equipment. This is not, you know, the, the types of things people are concerned about spending money on policing. This is facilities for our communication staff. This is facilities for training. This is facilities for running different exercises. This is for emergency preparedness for things like the flood and things like that. So I just want to respectfully disagree. I do think this is about ensuring that our staff deliver in a way that will make the community proud and in a way that we expect them to. And so
Are we, is this the part where we're having a one-on-one debate?
Well, I mean, I just, I felt the need to clarify my comments. And so, I, I mean, if you want to have a one-on-one debate, we can take
I just want this to be a fair process where people can, can weigh in and, and everybody gets to weigh in. But not just respond to one person's comment.
All right. I do think it's fair to respond to different comments and I, I really was trying to deescalate the situation, which I see I've not accomplished. And we're probably not going to come to agreement around this this evening. And so I'll, I'll just weigh in. If we would have funded this in twenty fifteen, it would have been six years that we would have avoided on construction inflation of over fifteen percent. So you do the math on how quick that the project will double at fifteen percent inflation from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty one. So I, I think some of the critical elements should be placed on council for delay and lack of action. And I'm concerned that continued delay will continue to increase the cost. So I hope we have a deliberative discussion tonight. We saw a, a presentation earlier this evening where a, a very small building was being proposed for one point five million in, in upgrades, not including some of the expensive seven hundred thousand upgrades to the historic section. And so when I compare other costs of construction that we're seeing to the scope and magnitude of this to address facility needs that we, we have, this improves energy efficiency because it brings it up to our current conservation code. This improves the facility so that our staff can do the work that we've asked them to do and it adds in some flex space for the community, not to mention storage space for records retention and other things. So I'm supportive of option two.
One thing you said was very inaccurate. Counsel did not delay this. We have never delayed this. We have always included in the CIP and even included additional funding that the staff has asked for. So that, that was an inaccurate statement.
So the, the delay has crop, cost project increases?
Delay, but counsel didn't cause the delay. Counsel always funded the request, even as it escalated.
Fair enough. Councilmember Lay?
Just a, as an aside, I think I think we we've struggled in the last week and a half around, maybe not week and a half, but week over some pretty serious capital related issues and and they're, they're hard and they come, you know, one comment that I made toward the end of the meeting last week was it, it would be nice to run some of these projects against one another. All of them, including the ones in the CIP, to make sure we're we're comfortable with the, the process that we're going through. I, I ha, I do have a question of, of staff on this, and I don't know who the proper person is. I guess I can suggest maybe the city manager and then she can pitch it to whoever. I'm, I'm interested in, because I think it may be part of why this is difficult. I, I, I don't mind a lively discussion. I think it's, that's not the issue. I think it's that some of these things are coming up a little bit piecemeal, or at least it feels like it might be. And that is, that gives me some it just gives me reason to, to just want to slow down a little bit. Why is this proposal, and I also want to say that some of these things, I know it's been like two thousand and fifteen and I know we keep talking about doing it. I'm not sure who has slowed it down, but it hasn't gotten done. Some of this stuff and, and some of it is overdue, I think. But why is this one coming to us now in the form that it's coming to us? Why? And, and is it, you know, is it appropriate for this one to be peeled off from the other capital projects that are hugely competing for dollars right now in Louisville?
City manager?
That's a staff question.
That's what I call city manager, Ballser.
Oh, okay.
So I guess I would say that as we've continued to look at this project, we wanted to be realistic about what we could accomplish based on what we were initially asked to do. And so that if the expectation was going to be that when the project was completed based on the dollars and even the additional dollars requested through option one, would that have met the needs and the demands of the project and what our expectations are for the future? And realistically, did we need to really understand what, what another option would be to complete that project, to have that conversation? And there's been a delay as, has been talked about. And so we felt that it was important to come back and have this discussion sooner than later. We, one of the reasons we delayed this last time was we were pursuing grant funds. We did not get those grant funds. And so again, we wanted to come ba, come back and can get concurrence that whether it's option one or two, that there's additional monies requested since we did not receive the grant funding as well on option number one. And anyone can add either Megan or the chief if they'd like to add anything.
Nothing, nothing for me, Heather.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Maloney? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Lay, I see you were sorry.
Yeah. Because I, I guess I have, you know, the option one, I, I think looks an awful lot like what we've what we've talked about in the past. Option two, I, I, I'm not willing to just dismiss it out of hand. It, it's certainly a sizable amount of money, which is why I'm trying to put it in the context of the CIP, which isn't in front of us or not in front of me at the moment. I, I get, you know, the need for flex space, I think, has been, we've learned a lot about that in the last year or so, one, because in times of COVID, we've, we've thought at various points about, gee, how are we going to have certain kinds of meetings and still have social distancing that may or may not be something we have to worry about too much in the future? I don't know. I don't know. And so a community room, a community flex space is attractive on, on that basis. And I know we don't have, we don't have that many community flex spaces around the city. And we are just losing one, which is not public. But over at Alfalfa's, that space over there has been used a great deal. And it's not a bad thing to have control of that as a city would be in this situation. So, and there are other, I, I would presume some of these others are, are important too. I don't know that they're as, you know, they're certainly not as fundamental as option one, or I think they would have been provided as options in the past. I note that in the, in the memo, the staff memo, there's a discussion about, there's, or there's at least a mention that it could be scaled. And I, I, I guess, you know, it could probably be, I guess I'm taking that in the sense of phased or we could do part of it or some of it. But anyway, I, I have, I'm interested in some of these. I, I think that's a big ask. And I'm not sure I'm, you know, I have the same concerns that council member Lipton does about the numbers and how solid those are. So I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not, yes, we, we could certainly task staff to come back with better numbers. But I, I'm not sure I'm, I'm quite there with that yet. I guess I'd like some more justification for some of these individual items in two before I agreed to send staff off with that, the direction to do, do more on that. I think the other thing that I was gonna throw out, well, for now, that's, those are, those are the main things.
Thanks, councilmember Lay. And I appreciated your comment about that. You didn't have the budget book. I expected to see Mayor Proton Maloney hold his up as he often does during council meetings. And I would do the same. So that was, thank you very much. Mayor Proton Maloney. You're muted. Sorry, I threw you off.
My budget book is always open. Yeah, I guess I'm taken back by this. And with all due respect, Mayor, I was a little taken back by your preamble. I, I believe that everyone on city council supports the police department. We believe they do a good job. They're an important aspect to our town for public safety. When I came on council in 2015, this was a topic. In one of the first meetings I had with the chief, this was a topic. And I remember the number actually, what was being bandied around was in the 90,000 range back then. So, you know, sure, construction costs have gone up. The, the scope of this has changed and so forth. But we've been, in, in the budget was for 2019. Now we're in 2021 and there was some delay because of trying to get a grant. And, you know, it was hopeful there. Well, so none of that happened. But, you know, that scope for option one was intended to support the police department. I remember having a budget meeting. It was possibly 2016 or 2017. And we met in that room downstairs. And if you had to go to the bathroom, you had to take the elevator upstairs. That doesn't make any sense. There wasn't enough locker rooms for, you know, each of the officers to have a locker and all those kind of things. So, you know, this was put on the budget and it was something that we funded because it, it was serving a particular need. You know, something we all think is important and value. I'm taken back by option two because this is something we've never discussed. I don't think I philosophically agree with having community flex space in the basement of the police building. You know, I think that we should fund option one. And I am taken back by the, you know, the way the costs have escalated, but it is what it is. But I think we should fund that. If we're going to consider something as large as option two, I agree with councilor Lay. It should be, you know, we should look at that in context with everything else that's in the budget book that I just lifted up. And as I scanned through there, there is a number of very important infrastructure things. If we decide to send a million dollars here, do we, what do we take out of there? And discussions we had last week are talking about uncovering these funds as well. So I'm taken back that this is the first time we're being exposed to option two. It's never been on the table before. If it's, if it's that important, it should be considered in a budget cycle. And it should be considered with everything else. And then at that time, we can make a policy decision about how important it is and how it gets funded. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Proton Maloney. And just added that, I wonder if we could ask the city manager a question. Would it be possible to do sort of what Mayor Proton Maloney has suggested? Is to move forward with option one and then consider option two through a future budget discussion? If, if I understood what you were saying, Mayor Proton Maloney?
I think if we wanted to consider option number two and you wanted to delay that discussion to the budget discussion, we would just delay the discussion. I don't, I, I think the doing number start, so I just, I don't know. You know, there's efficiencies and if you do the whole thing, I don't, I don't think you, you start on a piece of it if you're still considering the whole. So we have to defer the conversation until the budget-
Mayor Proton Maloney, sorry.
I, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, city manager, Valzer. I don't think I was trying to suggest it that way. If we want to consider two, then we should consider two in context of doing the budget. And if we decide it's that important and we will take other things out of the capital projects list, okay. But I don't want to make a decision that says we're going to have to take other things out of the capital projects list without having that, that discussion, a comprehensive discussion and talk about what's really important. If we, if we want to agree tonight to do option one, great. That means we don't have that discussion about option two.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, just to clarify, I was responding to, to your question, Mayor. Sorry, Mayor Proton Maloney, if I got confused about the question. Sorry about that.
Councilmember Dickinson.
I just had a clarifying question. Are our current sunk costs just the $34,000 on architectural design and engineering? Or are there other costs that we've had?
Those, those are the costs, I believe. Megan, is there anything else that we're missing?
No, those are the only costs that we've, yeah, that we've taken on at this point, the design.
Thank you.
All right, councilmember Lay.
Yeah, I'll follow up that a little bit. So 34,000 and change on architectural design and engineering today. What, what percent does that put us at in terms of design and engineering? That would be necessary on that project? Is it 30%, 50, 60, 90?
I guess I would let, I don't know, Kirk can, yeah, comment or chief, but they're, they're pretty refined. They were refined enough that when we went out for the RFP, we were able to get, you know, pretty accurate cost estimates associated with the architectural designs that we have.
Yeah, and I would expect that. I just, I wanted to confirm it. I don't want to make any assumptions about that. And, and just to roll this back a little bit, we're, the fact that it hasn't come to us before. I'm, I'm not, I guess I'm not entirely unhappy as a process about that. This is just seeking guidance from us. It's not seeking, we're not voting on this up or down. It's where do we want to go from here? So I, yeah, I think we can, if, if we want to push forward with number one because then I think we should do that. And I think we can give that direction. I think these other ones are, I mean, community flex space, do we need that? I don't know. I mean, is it worth, you know, some of the other things? I don't know. I, I think it's something we can talk about. I, I do wonder, I, a member of the public mentioned that we, you know, there's voting that goes on in this building. I don't know whether we have, you know, do we have, with the, with the bathrooms, for example, be something that would be important to make sure our facility is, is comfortable for voters or other members of the public using it as? I haven't heard anything about that. I don't know that's an important thing, but it might be. I, this is a discussion that I suppose we might have down the road. And I, I just don't know enough about the other ones to say I'm ready to feel as comfortable with this as I do with the first one. I think we need to move forward to the first one. I'm sorry, we didn't get the grant. But I, I think it's, I think it's something we have promised I, to get to. I think we do, setting aside, I, I don't know that we need to set aside or not set aside equity issues. The bottom line is that we expect a lot from our police. The things in option one, I think we have said for years that we're comfortable with, that they need to do to do their, their jobs. I, I think we are probably going to be needing, you know, we're going to be asking ever more of them. And we want them to be properly equipped. So, you know, I don't know that there's not going to be an awful lot of, I would hope that we wouldn't have an awful lot of controversy around option one. And option two, I don't know when we, it's proper to consider that. But I think if there's some imminent need for some of these, they, you know, it hasn't been shown yet. And I don't gather that it's, it's something that people are prepared to present tonight as, as essential. If they are, then let's, let's set a time to do that. I don't know, I don't think tonight's the night to be discussing all those other ones if council feels that we need a lot more information, better numbers, et cetera.
Thank you. So it seems like there's quite a lot of agreement around some things. Maybe a little disagreement around the edges of other things. It seems like there's a lot of agreement that we need to move forward with option one. It doesn't sound like there's consensus around option two. Are people comfortable giving that direction and moving on? Any further discussion? Councilmember Lay.
Oh, I, that's a-
Remnant hand. Sorry about that.
No, no problem.
Mayor Proton Maloney.
I, I can, I have before and I have tonight stated that I support option number one. So, period.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Yeah, I think I would, I would say that this predates me, obviously 2015. And so I, I can, I can support finishing something that we started. It's pretty hard for me to stomach, you know, $700,000 project for the police department right now out of the capital improvement fund. Certainly the 1.5, I guess we're not talking about that. So I will, I'll, I'll support the, the rest of council in that direction and where, where we had committed those funds previously.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I've, I came into this discussion in support of option number two. I remain supportive of option number two. But obviously, option number two is inclusive of option number one. So I would hope that we can move forward on option number one tonight. And then think about the addition of option number two, the, the additions that option number two would bring in a future CIP discussion.
Councilmember Fahy.
Yes, I agree with what Cussler Brown just said. I would absolutely support option number one. And I would like to have a conversation at a future date about option number two.
Thank you. Councilmember Lipton.
I'd like to ask staff, Megan, Heather, if we approve option number one tonight, when do you intend to proceed? When would you issue a notice to proceed?
If we, if we move forward with option number one, we, so we concurrently went out to bid and completed a procurement process, you know, concurrent with the grant application, you know, just with the hope that we would get that funding. And we wanted to keep the project moving because we know there have been some delays. And so I think we would be able to move pretty quickly. Chief, I don't know if you have any, you know, thoughts about more precise times, but I think we would be ready, pretty much ready to go.
We've got the, part of the RFP process, process was some proposed contracts. We would just need to have the city attorney's office take a look at those again. And the, the vendor, the construction company's been selected. So as soon as we can practically get them started.
Chief, is this a design build?
No, no, it, it was, I, we had a separate architect that designed it. And it's a white stone construction out of Boulder that would be the, the maximum price builder.
So you have construction drawings and you have a maximum guaranteed price?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So there's agreement that we'll move forward with option one. And then I just want to make it clear that, that there's no delay to the discussion. We're not delaying, we're getting going right away on option one. And in the future, if there are elements of option two that we want to talk about, we'll bring those up through the CIP process. But it's not an indication that we would wait in any way. Is that clear to everybody? All right. Sounds good. So that brings us to our next agenda item this evening, which is sole source contract between the city of Louisville and Kimley Horn and Associates for conceptual design and cost estimation. We'll have a staff presentation from Director Kaur, who was kind enough to join us on his vacation.
Good evening, Mayor, council. The staff report before you is a quick turnaround attempt to meet some of the, the questions and additional desire for better information around what Mayor, what current course around transportation ballot issue. Kimley Horn is, Kimley Horn, I'm sorry, it's 12:30 AM where I'm at. So my brain's a little slow. Kimley Horn is, has been selected through two other projects in the city through federal funding and CDOT requirements. So, which is a very rigorous qualifications-based selection process. So they are working on the South Boulder Road corridor improvements. They're also working on the Highway 42 future study, which encompasses four of the underpasses out of six of the underpasses that we discussed a week ago. So we were able to talk with that team and put together a package that'll roughly bring all underpass locations up to around a 10% design level. And that will survey each location, review utilities in those areas, review right-of-way impacts and possible acquisition costs. And kind of all the, the fatal flaws analysis you would go through to, to have some level of comfort in these locations, more so than what we do. And areas where we have gone farther than 10%, we'll just refresh information and make we, make sure we have current cost estimates. The sixth location, Bullhead Gulch, will be part of a, a separate package with Atkins who designed that location. But for tonight, we're talking about Kimley Horn, five out of the six locations. So that'll be Viapia, Main Street, Highway 42 at South Boulder Road, the South Short Street area on Highway 42, and then the Dillon Road.
Thank you, Director Kaur. So that'll take us to our public comment on this agenda item. If any members of the public would care to comment on this agenda item, please raise your hand. All right, seeing none, council discussion. Any questions, comments, or motions on this agenda item? First in the queue is councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and move, move that we approve this sole source contract.
Thank you. And did you want to make any comments about your motion?
Nope.
All right. The next person in the queue is Mayor Proton Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. So Kurt, you're on- Um, so Kurt, you're on the East Coast, cool. Um, the question I have is, is this a time and materials or, or is this a flat rate?
Uh, I'm going to call it uh not to exceed, but it was put together really fast, so it, it could possibly have some overrun. But we're in the ballpark of what we'd spend to figure this out.
Okay, and then the, the addendums would be if there's additional underpasses?
Uh, cor- correct. If you added additional underpasses to, to the analysis, then we'd add more money.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Now, I would say if you have those and we have about six weeks, so if you have that in mind, we should talk about that tonight, not two weeks from now.
I, I don't have any interest in additional ones. Is that what you, is that what you're asking?
That's what he was asking.
Yeah.
Let me be clear. I don't have any interest in additional ones.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Could we please have a roll call though?
I don't believe there was a second on the motion.
I seconded it.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone. That takes us to our city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report.
Thank you. And then I'll just ask if there are any um council committees that have pressing reports they'd like to give this evening. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes, we had a finance committee meeting yesterday and I want to read you the minutes. No, I'm just kidding. Um, no, we actually had two very important things and I suggest you get a, get a hold of the um, agenda from the meeting because we have the final capital improvements plan from 2020 as well as the final 2020 statements of revenue, of fund revenue expenditures and changes to fund balance. I know those are revving, but they're very, very important financial documents. Uh, if you have any questions, you can talk to me or Kevin. So, but thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you very much for pointing that out. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, council consortium of cities met about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago now. We talked about natural disasters um and uh disaster preparedness. Uh, joint issues with Superior met. Uh, we talked about a number of issues, including possibly using um uh, creating some, a new partnership that would allow Louisville residents to maybe use the Superior branch drop-off location if we can come up with a, an agreement. Uh, but that's definitely still in the works. Um, and then I just wanted to add um in terms of my comments for this evening. Uh, it's not lost on me that, and Councilman Belay mentioned it earlier, that um Alfalfa's will be leaving uh the space uh in Louisville that they currently occupy. Um, you know, for a variety of reasons, some business-related, some COVID-related, um, some very historic at this point. Um, the uh, I would call it the vacant property issue in Bold, in Louisville is becoming more and more uh, even more problematic. It has not, it has gotten worse uh and not gotten better. Um, and, and so I would like to um put on agenda, an agenda, a future agenda, a, a discussion with council uh and our um economic development staff um related to, something related to, you know, what is the plan um for us to attract businesses to fill these vacant properties? Um, how are we selling the city um to potential businesses to come in and, and be a part of, of Louisville? I think the, you know, part of, part of what we heard tonight as the, you know, the, the, the conversation around uh, the Main Street property um was uh helpful because I know there've been a lot of concerns about how long that has been vacant. Um, but, you know, we're a long way to go from, from filling many of these, many of these vacant properties. And so, you know, I'd like to have a, a discussion about that um with the full council. I think it's, I think it's important. And I don't want to, and, and I want to be respectful. I know Councilmember Dickinson has his hand up, so maybe he'll talk about this. I don't want to get in ahead of what the EVC is doing. Um, maybe it makes sense for the EVC to engage first. Um, but I do, I do think it's something that the full council needs to be involved in, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. We can add that to a future agenda and just, Councilmember Dickinson may have comments on this or you may have different comments. And just um remembering this isn't on the agenda tonight, but we can add things to future agendas, no problem. Councilmember Dickinson?
Um, yeah, I think in the um we're going to need to add um to a future agenda item from the finance, or sorry, from the Economic Vitality Committee, um, a conversation about um the future form of that EVC. So there is some confusion on whether we had direction to um move forward with a new form or not. And so it's become clear that we'll have to come back to council for that conversation. So we'll need to add that to a future agenda and um, Councilmember Brown, certainly, um, yes, uh, the filling vacancies is a huge part of um Director Pierce's job and in our um economic vitality strategic plan. And certainly, you know, us figuring out the final form of the EVC will help us in um diving into lots of our strategic um plan initiatives. So that will be coming before you guys shortly.
Thank you. Any other future agenda items than those two? All right, we'll get those scheduled in and see how they fit with the rest of the things. And um so next advanced agenda, you know, you'll check, you'll check on there and see where they fall. Any other comments this evening from council members? Well, thank you so much, everybody. We're adjourned.